Seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one.
Just waiting to see us on the screen. Excellent. Welcome to the Brisbane City Council meeting of September 7, 2023. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:31 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here. City Attorney, do we have a report out from closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Michael Roush, Legal Counsel, sitting in for City Attorney McMorro this evening. In closed session, the council had three claims before it. Claim at Reese, claim at Allstate, and claim at McCormick. The council unanimously denied and rejected all three claims. There was also a conference with legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. There was simply discussion and no direction given. And finally, there was a conference with legal counsel concerning pending litigation concerning the city of Brisbane versus California High Speed Rail Authority, Superior Court of Sacramento County, case number 80004010. And again, no direction was given to staff as a result of this closed session. That concludes the reporting out on the closed session for this evening.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. Staff has requested that consent calendar items I, J, and K be moved to new business. I'll also consider any other amendments or emotion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Cunningham.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. Moving on to awards and presentations, item B, September Recovery Happens Month. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. September 2023 Recovery Happens Month. Whereas the month of September 2023 is National Recovery Month. And whereas National Recovery Month spreads the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health. And whereas treatment and prevention providers across the communities of San Mateo County have dedicated themselves to promoting recovery, saving lives, de-stigmatizing, and educating the public about substance use and co-occurring disorders. And whereas every day in Brisbane, men, women, and youth enter treatment for substance use and mental health disorders and begin the road to wellness and recovery in a system which emphasizes behavioral health as an essential part of overall health. And whereas San Mateo County continues to support Recovery Month's mission to improve the lives of those living with these disorders, to celebrate individuals in recovery, and to acknowledge those working to provide integrated recovery services. And whereas prevention works, treatment is effective, and recovery is possible. And whereas people can and do recover. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Brisbane does hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Recovery Happens Month. Recovery Happens Month is supported and celebrated in Brisbane and promotes the importance of prevention, treatment, and recovery. In this spirit, this year's theme is Recovery is for Everyone, Every Person, Every Family, Every Community. And we also have a proclamation. I understand the same person will be accepting both. So I'll move on to the next item, which is item C, Suicide Prevention Month. And I'll go ahead and read that now. September 2023 Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas Brisbane will join the county, state, and country in honoring Suicide Prevention Month September. National Suicide Prevention Week, September 10 through 16, and World Suicide Prevention Day, September 10, to spread the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas in 2022, 67 people died by suicide in San Mateo County, and 13,525 calls were received by San Mateo County Crisis Line, run by Star Vista Crisis Center. And whereas Brisbane residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other in preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate and reaching out to local 24/7 resources, including our local San Mateo County Crisis Line, run by Star Vista Crisis Center, which you can call 650-579-0350, or visit samateaucrisis.org, or 988-SUICIDE AND CRISIS-LIFELINE. Call or text 988. And whereas the San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity, Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, and partners are collectively organizing activities that our community can participate in throughout September Suicide Prevention Month, including free in-person and virtual events, advocacy days, and communication campaign. The 2023 theme is Share Hope Together. Ongoing updates posted at www.smchealth.org/spm. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Brisbane, State of California, hereby designates September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Month and calls upon everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. Sherry Bowles, a volunteer with our San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity is here to accept both proclamations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Davis, Mayor Protem O'Connell, and Councilmembers Cunningham, Lentz, and Mackin. My name is Sherry Bowles, and I'm a volunteer with San Mateo County's Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity. Thank you very much for joining the county and nearly all of your neighboring cities and towns in proclaiming September as Suicide Prevention Month and Recovery Happens Month. I am honored to accept your Suicide Prevention Month proclamation on behalf of the county's Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office. And I am pleased to accept the Recovery Happens Month proclamation on behalf of our community partner, Voices of Recovery, San Mateo County. For September is Suicide Prevention Month, I encourage you and Brisbane residents to promote this year's theme, Share Hope Together. The act of sharing, whether it's through sharing stories, your time, resources, or your experiences, can serve as a powerful tool in suicide prevention. I'm sharing hope today by wearing purple and teal, the national colors of Suicide Prevention Month. I also have my nails. So purple and teal are the national colors of Suicide Prevention Month. And I'm also using this year's theme as a Zoom background on my laptop, which can be found on the county's website. So together, we can share hope by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words by checking in with someone we're concerned about, and sharing resources, including the San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis Hotline, which is 650-579-0350, 988, which is the newish National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, and the county's website at smchalth.org/spm, where you can also find free events and resources. For Recovery Happens Month, I'm honored to represent our community partner, Voices of Recovery, San Mateo County, which is a nonprofit, peer-led organization whose mission is to advocate for and support the recovery community, people overcoming drug and/or alcohol addictions. This year's theme is Recovery is for Everyone, Every Person, Every Family, and Every Community. Voices of Recovery encourages collaboration with everyone to increase public awareness surrounding substance use and mental health recovery. By working together and with everyone, Voices of Recovery is pleased to report that, yes, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. For more information on Recovery Happens Month and to learn about recovery events for everyone, I encourage you and Brisbane residents to please visit the county's website So thank you again for recognizing September as both Suicide Prevention Month and Recovery Happens Month in Brisbane. Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
And I will pass these to you. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your work in the county. Oh, true, okay. You want to come and then open it up, and then we can... I'll open one, and then you open the other. So Ingrid can take a photo. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Okay. Moving on to oral communications, number one. Is there a member of the public wishing to make a public comment at this time on an item that is not on the agenda?
I have no slips, Madam Mayor, and I see no hands raised.
Okay. Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a first and a second to approve consent calendar items D through H and item L?
So move second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. Items I, J, and K will be moved to new business. Items I, K, and J involve groups in which I, Councilmember Lentz, and Councilmember O'Connell have leadership positions outside of the council. And we will continue to individually abstain, and we will move back from the dais during any discussion on that item. So each item will be taken up individually without the participation of the involved council member. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to old business, item M. Receive presentation by CCAG staff and consider authorizing the city manager to sign a funding agreement for the initial installation of conduit and fiber optic liners in Bay Shore Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, good evening. The item before you tonight is a follow-on from a staff report that you heard at your last regularly scheduled meeting prior to the summer recess. And the purpose this evening is to provide additional information to you to address concerns and questions that were raised at that meeting to hopefully help you and facilitate your final decision-making on this project. Here this evening to present to you from CCAG is Executive Director Sean Charpentier. And as Sean is making his way up to the podium, I'd also like to know that there are two other members of his staff here, and these two ladies have been incredibly helpful to your public work staff throughout the entire spectrum of work that CCAG does. So Kanki Chung and Audrey Sherman-Meese are seated right there where Sean was. Thank you, Sean, for being here.
Thank you very much for having me. Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Protem and council members. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about the Smart Corridor project. I feel like we are nearing the county finish line, and part of it lies in Brisbane. So hopefully it'll be congratulations. Next slide, please. One of the challenges we face in the county and the region as a whole is a lot more trips and a lot more people, and we're really losing our ability to just build our way out of it. So it's forcing us to be creative and to look at how do we use existing facilities more strategically. And one strategy to do that is what we refer to as the Smart Corridor. Next slide, please. The Smart Corridor is a collaboration with Caltrans, CCAG, and the county, and cities throughout the county. And it's really the application of intelligent transportation systems to technology to facilitate moving more people through our facilities more safely. It consists of an interlocked network of traffic signals, detection devices, and communication signs that allow us to analyze what's happening and move vehicles to points where to help them clear bottlenecks or avoid traffic and/or accidents. It's designed to enhance mobility. It installs traffic management infrastructure and communications, and it enables active traffic management capabilities and coordinations that have been shown to reduce delays in a variety of cities in the county. It also, if, when used properly, reduces GHG by minimizing idling, improves safety, and also can improve transit service. Next slide, please. It is an ambitious project. We have completed what we refer to as the Southern Segment, which runs from East Palo Alto to San Bruno. The segment in South San Francisco is currently under construction, and we are ready to begin construction on what we refer to as the Northern Segment, which is in Daly City and in Brisbane, as well as a little bit in Colma. Next slide, please. It is an extensive network. On the Southern Segment, there are 50 miles of fiber optics cable. We have 663 devices, including 117 trailblazer signs, 236 traffic controllers, and 40 vehicle detectors, and 270 closed-circuit TV cameras in the Southern Segment. Next slide, please. For the Northern one segments, we are completed with our design and ready to begin construction collectively, including Brisbane and Daly City. It includes 13 trailblazer signs, six traffic controllers, seven vehicle detectors, and 57 closed-circuit TVs, and about 5.3 miles of new fiber optic cable. We are looking to begin construction this fall. In terms of the timeline for the northern cities, we did complete the design this spring. We plan to advertise for construction in the, really should be the fall or winter of 2023. Excuse me, fall of 2023, winter of 2024. And we would complete construction in spring of 2025. In terms of the cost, the estimated construction cost for the entire project is 9.9 million. Next slide, please. Of that cost, approximately 3.8 million is intended for construction in Brisbane. And that portion includes 2.6 million for construction and 1.2 million for the conduit and the fiber purchase and installation. The remainder of the construction costs will be for Daly City, Colma sections. Next slide, please. In terms of the Brisbane project elements themselves, it includes nine traffic signal controller upgrades, 11 TV cameras, six changeable message signs, nine detection devices, 3.4 miles of fiber communications, and also a connection to the city hall. Next slide, please. In terms of the fiber optics, the fiber is the backbone of the system. It is the, it is sort of the nervous system through which the signals transmit. So it connects the detection systems with the cameras, with the instructions from the controllers, with the message signs that inform drivers of where to go. It's used for traffic signal connections. It's used for incident management, for field device communications, intra-agency communication. Also, cities use it for their own city facility connections, for internet television or phone services, facilitating public services, and connected vehicles or autonomous vehicles and lighting. Next slide, please. This graphic shows the length of the fiber optics that will be new in Brisbane. It's 3.4 miles, runs the length of Bay Shore. And that fiber optics includes a portion that will be used for the Smart Corridor project, a portion that CCAG will use for future ITS components, and then 144 strands that the city can use. And those are strands that the city can use to better provide its municipal services, to link its facilities, and whatever else it feels is in its interest. In addition to that, the city will have access to the cameras at all times so they can identify problem locations and respond accordingly, and use those devices as needed. Next slide, please. One of the major components that is integral to the system is what we refer to as changeable message signs. These are electronic signs that, in the instance of an emergency, would tell drivers and motorists where to go. It might say detour, it might say take a left, it might say don't go here. It really depends on the emergency and where we're trying to direct traffic. These signs would not be on most of the time, and certainly not, they're rarely on for emergencies, but they're very helpful when we need them. I should say emergencies, they're also helpful in the case of scheduled work that comes up, where we need to do detours. The city can use these signs for its own purposes during special events or other priorities. And these do also can be used to broadcast safety and emergency messages that are not necessarily related to the roadway. There are six signs in Brisbane. Most of them are on Bay Shore. I think some of them, it looks like the map got cut off a little bit, and there are two, I think, four on Bay Shore and two on Tunnel. Next slide.
Can the city clerk scroll down on this presentation so we can see where the other signs are? Thank you very much.
And those signs are located in areas where they would be most useful to motorists who need, perhaps may need instruction or advice or direction in the case of emergency, or if the city wants to use them for a planned special event. Next slide, please. At the presentation, we understand that there were some concerns about the signs, the size of the signs, and we wanted to come back and present an option that has smaller signs. So we worked with our designer, talked to Caltrans, and we are proposing a much smaller sign. It's five by four. The same number of signs as they are part of a system that needs to work in an interrelated fashion. But the signs we are proposing would be significantly smaller. An example is shown in the yellow box there. And next slide. And here is sort of a scale representation. It's about a 50% reduction in surface area. The prior signs that were being discussed were eight by five, and these are five by four. And we hope that, we want to be sensitive to the concerns of our partners. We certainly understand the need to have a minimal impact and to also support the nature of the neighborhood and the community, and think that this is a way to do that, and also to meet the needs of the system.
Quick question for you. The eight by five, is that what's in the completed part of the county so far? Or are they on a, they're on the five by four?
It differs.
Okay.
I don't, I might have to ask my staff. In terms of our existing signs.
They are smaller signs, but most, for example, in South San Francisco, they will have a mixture of both.
Okay, but in Brisbane, you're only proposing five by four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Next slide. Just as an example, Caltrans is going to be closing Highway 1 to replace the Cordilleros Creek coming up in September and October. And they are using the Smart Corridor system, as well as our signs, to help plan the detours and direct traffic safely around those closures. And they're doing that in collaboration with the adjoining cities to try to minimize the impact as much as possible. So it has real everyday purposes, both for scheduled work, emergencies, and special events. And also the city will have access to it at all times. And next slide. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. Additional CCAG staff are here if there are questions that I can't answer. And we look forward to working with Brisbane to complete the Northern Segment, northeast, I guess it would be the northeastern segment of the Smart Corridor.
Great. I'll have you stay up there. Council questions?
Madam Mayor?
I don't have any for Sean.
Yes.
Could we go to the one slide showing the locations in Brisbane?
Lentz?
Yes, please.
Right there, and then scroll over.
Okay, if you could scroll down.
Oh, wait, there you go.
Okay, an obvious question, Sean. Why do we have three signs so close together near the bottom?
It's for the direction and for the amount of traffic that comes in there.
Because I can...
I believe that is where, is that where Tunnel comes in?
On the freeway.
I think...
And the...
It's the entrance to town.
It's the entrance to town.
Oh, I see, yeah.
It's due to the number of lanes that converge. I don't know if there's a more technical discussion than that.
Intersection there.
Looks like it'd be one for different directions.
One's on one side, one's on the other side.
Yes.
One's on Tunnel.
Okay.
Oh, and one's on Tunnel.
That's why.
So that's where you'll have the most movement on that alignment of any, of any and all vehicles.
And so considering even the reduced size, with having that many signs at one general vicinity, have you thought about this potentially being too distracting or reducing sight lines for motorists who are trying to look at traffic? Because one thing that we learn about signage is that too much, and people will ignore it, or it becomes confusing. And so that's kind of when I see that many in a jurisdiction. And if it's, it looks like that's at Old County at our entrance to town. That's a congested intersection.
And that is, because of that, that is the reason why we would want a sign for each direction, so we could address them as needed. I think it's, it is, there's a couple of issues. One, when they're operating, you want people to look at them. You want them to be visible enough. And then their placement was worked out with our designer and also Caltrans, if necessary, and city staff to have minimal impact and also to ensure that they were not infringing on the safety of everyday operations.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may help Sean out a little bit with the perspective from the traffic engineer. Part of the basis of design of this is that when the roadways are exceptionally closed, so if you think about the traffic conditions you deal with when there's a major event at Cal Palace and everyone's leaving at the same time, or if there's a closure on US 101. So at that point in time, you have traffic that's crawling through the community. And what you're trying to do is give those drivers unfamiliar with our roads the directions. So they're not approaching like they would be normally on Bay Shore at 45 or 50 miles an hour. They're approaching at 15, they hope. So even then, with the reduced size signage, they've got plenty of time to perceive that information and to react to it appropriately. Thank you, Mayor.
One faces north, one faces south on Bay Shore, and the other one faces as you're coming off Tunnel, right towards town. So if you're coming off 101, you're going to hit that one at Lagoon and Tunnel, and then it's going to tell you, hey, go over this bridge. And then you hit that one there at Old County and, and then, and Bay Shore. And then you're going to turn, it's going to tell you to turn right so that you can get back on the freeway. It's going to tell you to turn, you know, left to hit the freeway up the other way. So I think that if you had just one there, then you would, people from coming, people coming from other directions wouldn't be able to see it.
And can you perhaps put alerts during the middle of the day and commute hours? You're going too fast on Bay Shore, we live here.
Slow down.
Yes, you actually could. We, the city does have access to that, and we do have control. And we could say, slow down, thank you. You could put notes like that.
Radar in use.
Or you could put...
Yeah.
It's, it's the Thursday... It's the Thursday Farmer's Market. You could put...
Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Show up for community festival. Christmas tree lighting night. All of those options are available to you.
So with these, I'm not sure if others have finished asking the question. Are these the standard safety orange lighting signs? Or are they the more, less intrusive white light?
Do you mean the color of the illumination?
The wording, yes.
I think we have a graphic.
I think it's orange.
I think it... Yeah, they could be, you have the ability to program it to what, to a few different colors.
Can we go back to the 101? The one that said 101? See, it looks like you can change the colors there. And then there's red, because there's an arrow below that 101, or next left, yeah. That's kind of advanced.
Okay.
Is that it? You want more?
That's my only question. The rest is discussion.
Okay. Anyone else with... Cliff, you have any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Thanks. So there are the vehicle detectors. So what are those for?
The vehicle detectors are to determine volumes and speed.
Okay, so, okay.
So they help to send that information.
Okay, got it.
So then you can, you have a picture of what's happening, so you can see if it's backing up there. That may adjust your communication somewhere else, or the timing, perhaps.
Oh, okay, all right. So it's not a GPS type?
I'm sorry?
So you don't use GPS to, to, you know, determine where traffic should flow? This is just, you know, at the site, collecting data that's where cars are passing by?
So it's very much like what you can see on Cal... And I'm sorry, Mayor, let me know if I'm out of line for just jumping in. I'm trying to help Sean. It's, it's very much like you would see on the Caltrans live website. It's, it's very much like you would see on the Caltrans live website where they have different locations. We have a camera. So it's just a camera showing the flow of traffic. And because it's got a counter there, too, the important information that that feeds back to us is that, because the city can monitor it as well here in City Hall. And if we see all of a sudden, like, this is really backing up, we need, instead of telling these cars to get off here, we need to tell these cars, keep going straight, go all the way down to South City to access 101. We can do that. And what we can also do is we can see that traffic is free flowing now at 40 miles an hour. We can turn these signs off. We don't need any more direction. So that's, that's how those are utilized operationally.
That's great, thanks. And then, you know, you talked about the fiber optics and that there's, you know, other benefits for the community, right, the 144 strands. So can you just kind of share what other cities are doing with those capabilities?
They are using these capabilities for a lot of the items that we've discussed, which is proactive management. Some of them build on this to, to better synchronize lights and have better control over it. In terms of the additional strands, I don't know what they're doing with them. I don't know, do we have any idea of any other uses for the strands? I don't, I also don't know if we would know because once it's built, we use it, we use it, and what they have is theirs.
So the additional strands, that's the possession of the city to use as it sees fit?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, there are 288, and a portion of them will be for smart corridor. And then the rest will be for CCAG, and 144 will be for, sorry, not the rest. 144 will be for the city, and then a portion for the smart corridor and CCAG.
Okay, all right. And I guess you probably have something you want to add.
Oh, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. I was just going to mention that some cities use it to control their lighting, you know, sometimes.
Can you speed the mic a little bit more so we can make sure we get this right?
Sometimes cities use it to control their lighting in an intelligent way to save energy. And other times, they allow communication between different departments. Let's say the courtyard is further away, you know, have, have that inner-city communication, provide access to internet, access to library. Some cities could choose to use it for public Wi-Fi and et cetera. So there are a lot of different options that are available.
I'm glad you mentioned the public Wi-Fi because that was something that I was wondering if that was possible. But it sounds like the city could make all of its buildings, smart buildings, with this, you know, with the fiber optics.
Yeah.
If it chose to do so.
So again, Public Works Director jumping in, I'm so sorry for this as we're doing this back and forth. But for instance, one strand of fiber optic can transmit 32 terabytes of data.
Okay.
So we're being offered 144. So you can go to your heart's content in future with what you want to do with this.
Yeah, I know that's something that we've been talking about for a long time, since I've been on the council.
We had talked a long, long time ago, sir, about running it down Valley.
And all these different types of, you know, scenarios to do it and.
We are limited only by our imagination once 144 strands are in place.
That is fantastic. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so thank you so much. We will now move on to public comment. I see a hand raised from the audience. Why don't you come up? Their time is three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering if any work is going to be allowed at night because when the Caltrans was electrifying, there were times where it actually, I think fallen metal was sounding like gunshots. And I happened to call the police department, the non-emergency number. And I asked if there were any permits that they knew of people working at night. And it became clear that I was transferred to another operator, or the operator wasn't in Brisbane. And so I'm asking whether there's any prohibition for working at night and that the police have knowledge of night work just in general. I wanted to know who's in charge of posting because I've had experiences where we're on 101 and it says there's danger ahead and the danger's never there. So I guess it's who's in charge of it being accurate. And the other thing is, is that there's an essence of cell phone tower in this that you have to do the transmissions. And just wanted to reaffirm that we have a, an ordinance in this town that there are no cell phone towers allowed within 600 feet of a school. This isn't being proposed to be near a school, but I just wanted to remind people. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Randy like to address at least the first two items?
Sure, happy to address the first two. So the example that Ms. Dilworth brings up is a result of what occurred in the Caltrain corridor where the city has no jurisdiction over. And what was going on with their construction is that they were required to do it during non-revenue hours when Caltrain is not running so that they don't prevent transit from operating during the daytime. This project, the first phase of it, the installation of the conduit, is planned to be done during the daytime, and it's primarily going to be done by boring. So you dig one hole, you take a boring machine, and it pushes your conduit down the road. And then they, so it's much less disruptive than the, than the other facilities are. And I'm sorry, the second question was after nighttime, it was.
Who controls the?
Who controls? It's a joint effort between CCAG, between us, and between the Traffic Control Center and Caltrans.
Okay, any other public comment?
I see no further raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so now we'll move on to council discussion, and we'll start with Councilmember Cunningham.
I know where these signs are going to go, so I don't have a problem with them. I am anticipating that we make sure that they're off most of the time. That is my only concern.
Councilmember Lance?
I think it's a great project, and I hope that we move forward with it.
Councilmember O'Connell?
I'm really glad that we got the size of the signs reduced. I used to do a lot of driving up El Camino Real and saw a lot of the signs in use. You know, say, let's say at Broadway, they would have a sign saying, turn right for 101. 99% of the people know that 101 is to the right. And everybody else has their GPS on. I would hate to have that kind of repetitive signage lit up in our town when not absolutely necessary. I don't think that wayfaring normally is a problem that most people suffer from anymore with all the smartphones and the GPS and everything else. Sometimes it's more of a problem that our people are following their GPS and don't use common sense while they're doing it. So I would want to make sure that we didn't use it willy-nilly and have our night skies lit up with orange caution signs or white caution signs anytime that we don't absolutely have to have them. Looking at this staff report, I'm under the understanding that this project is fully funded by CCAG. And so there's no proportional payment due from the city.
You're correct, ma'am.
And that is subject to whatever cost increases they may have.
That's absolutely correct, ma'am. Right, between Legal Counsel Michael Roush and between CCAG's counsel, I think there's language in there. They represented the fact that, and CCAG obviously doesn't want to be exposed to just willy-nilly charges. And we don't want to be exposed to charges that we're not responsible for. So I believe the two of them have come together and crafted language that clearly understands that when there are extra charges, if that happens during construction, and it's not that uncommon happen during construction, the two parties will meet and confer and will work it out and make sure that the costs are assigned properly. Like, for instance, would we be assigned additional charges if we said, well, hey, we want you to add this here? And that was a determination made by the city engineer in the field. Well, that's something we should pay for if we decide that, yes, we want to add it. It's not part of the plans, it's not part of the contract, that's on us. But if it's just a matter of the contractors going along, they discover an unknown condition in the field, that's an extra cost, but it's a cost that should be borne by the party that, party was paying for the installation because that cost would have been borne regardless of where the work was being done or who was managing.
So within Brisbane, we would be the project manager?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we would submit our, our costs to CCAG, and they'd get reimbursed in a timely manner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the maintenance of this is covered also by CCAG ongoing maintenance of this line?
There's not really any maintenance envisioned that I'm aware of, but I don't remember the exact details of what we do if it was like maintaining a traffic junction box or something. Looks like Ms. Chung wants to answer that for you. Or maybe Sean? Go ahead, it's fine, I'm sorry.
Typically, what we do is enter into an agreement where we would be responsible for the above-ground fixtures, and the city would be responsible for below-grade, which in this case would be the fiber.
Okay, thank you. And how would we handle that contract? I'm speaking to staff.
No, no, I see, ma'am. So I'm just, I'm pressing my way through it because what's underground is going to be a fiber conduit. And it's a plastic conduit, and it's fiber that's encased in there. There's not really any regularly scheduled maintenance that occurs to that. But the only thing that happens to that is on the odd occasion, those things do get hit by the big yellow locating machines, which are excavators. They're out there without dig alert and not doing the work properly. And in those cases, when contractors hit those things, they're responsible for the cost of repairing it.
Okay. And are we anticipating that this conduit runs alongside the road? Or in the center of the road, or where is that conduit going to be?
It moves across various sections of the roadway so that it is out of conflict with existing utilities and with planned utilities that the city is going to put in.
Okay, so after the roadway or side of the roadway or whatever is dug up, that area will be repaved to its pre-existing condition?
Oh, absolutely. That's a requirement that would be encroachment permit. But as I mentioned earlier, most of this is going to be by boring. So it's smaller borehole pits that are dug, maybe, I don't know, maybe half the size of this table, say, would be the size of something like that. And then the boring machine enters it from there. So it's not an open-cut trench the entire way through, it's pushing conduit through.
Thank you, that's my only.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a hand raised from Michael Roush.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to be clear about the funding arrangement, the way the proposed agreement would read would be that neither party would authorize the contractor to purchase and install fiber in the conduit which exceeds the current capped amount of $1,156,949, unless a funding source had been identified for that and the funding agreement amended to reflect that. However, if either party does provide authorization without the other party's agreement, then that party who authorized it would be responsible for the cost. And in addition, sometime in time, you know, there may be additional claims to come in that the contractor undertakes without having authorization from either city, the city or CCAG. And if that were to occur, and if through legal proceedings it was determined that that claim was owed, then the parties would agree to meet and confer to decide how to allocate that cost. So, you know, there's not an ironclad guarantee that no case will the city not have to incur additional cost. But I think the way the agreement is now written, it provides certainly reasonable assurances that that is not likely to occur. And with respect to the, to the signage issue, again, the proposed, the proposed language would be that the, that the city and CCAG will coordinate regarding the installation of the signs, including their location, sizes, and operating features. But the council would not have the unilateral decision-making as to whether the signs should be put in or where they'd be located and operating conditions. It would be a mutually agreed-upon situation. And I wanted to make sure the council was clear that those were, you know, two issues the council raised before, and the revised agreement now provides, as I've just indicated.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Mackin?
Thank you. I do have one question I'd like answered if possible. Considering utilizing the message feature and the city's ability to utilize that, say that we had either an accident, we wanted to post, slow down or slow traffic caution, or let's say there's a wildfire and we have an influx of North County fire trucks all coming. And let's say our Public Works Director posts that. Is that preempted by maybe you want a message that says, detour here to 101? How do you determine the priority?
I can, I can tell you that CCAG would never get in the way of emergency communications from either Caltrans or your city, or maybe CHP, I guess, through Caltrans. That's not our role, that's not our intent. I don't think we would direct anybody to use this message for much of anything unless it were part of a larger communication requirement or necessity. In that sense, I believe that if there were sort of competing priorities that the city and Caltrans would talk and figure out how to best handle those, I think, and come to an agreement.
Okay, thank you. And, and one additional thing, I'll echo something my colleagues pointed out. I would really ask that you give prime consideration to keeping these signs blank most of the time. If, if it's a continuous barrage message of fasten your seatbelt, don't drink and drive, it just becomes visual paralysis, and people are going to start ignoring them. So I think when the urgency is there, then it's really clear there's a, there's a message to be had, and it will be more effective. And thank you also for reducing the signage size.
Thank you. It would be exceedingly rare for CCAG to say, we'd like to post this. So most of that responsibility on a day-to-day basis will reside in your city staff, which is one of the benefits of this, is they know better. And then on rare occasions, Caltrans might say, we need this for emergency purposes. This is what we'd like to do.
So are you waiting then for a response from our staff, like, hey, we need, or you just do it?
I'm sorry?
Like, if you needed to post something on the, on the signs? Are you awaiting staff approval, or you just go ahead and you just post it?
It's, there are two instances. One is.
It could be like two in the morning or something.
One is like scheduled work, and that, if we ever had to do something like that, which we almost never would, like, we don't do much work, we don't do much construction. So if it's scheduled, a scheduled message, we would work very closely with your staff and Caltrans. If it's an emergency, we wouldn't really have, we're not an emergency notification agency. We don't control that. That would be a communication among your staff, Caltrans, and CHP, perhaps depending on the level or the extent of the emergency. Does that make sense?
Or like, because some of these are, you know, to, in your presentation, you're talking about like intelligently moving the flow of traffic to reduce bottleneck. So, I mean, that's not an emergency situation, but it sounds like it's a situation in which you would want to use, like, would that be you posting those kinds of? Or would be, okay, it would be Caltrans or it would be somebody else, okay.
That would be, in an emergency, that would be Caltrans and your city staff in a non-emergency situation, which may feel like an emergency to you because you live it. That would be your city staff.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Well, I think we sound mostly in agreement, so I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll authorize the city manager to sign a funding agreement in the initial installation of conduit and fiber optic liners in Bayshore Boulevard.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Item N, information report concerning development impact fees.
Madam Mayor, I'm wondering if, considering that there are members of the public here on the public art item as well as the applicant, if you want to take that first because.
Absolutely. Can we do that at this point, even though we already amended the agenda earlier? We can just be fluid with it?
I think, unless the city attorney says otherwise, I think you can be fluid.
Agreed.
Okay. So we will move ahead then to, instead, to new business. Item O, consider the approval of the Phase Three proposal package for privately installed public art. And we'll go ahead and start with the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We have before you tonight the proposal package from Phase Three for their privately installed public art at the Genesis Marina Life Sciences Campus located at Sierra Point on 3,000 to 3,500 Marina Boulevard. The City of Brisbane's Public Art Implementation Guidelines provides direction to developers regarding the city's art and public places program. Private non-residential developments with building development costs in excess of $5 million are obligated to either contribute an equal amount to at least 1% of their building development costs to the Brisbane Public Art Fund as an in-lu contribution, or to devote an equal amount to at least 1% of their building development. or to devote an equal amount to at least 1% of their building development costs for the acquisition and installation of publicly accessible art on the development site. It's important to make the distinction that the Public Art Advisory Committee has two core functions with regards to the installation of art in Brisbane. The first is to solicit art on behalf of the city and commission artworks for the city's art portfolio. In that process, the city retains the control of the installation from conception to design to actual installation. The second purpose of the Public Art Advisory Committee, which is the reason why we are here tonight, is to review proposals from private developers for public art installations on private property. In this instance, the city does not have the authority to dictate the specific art to be placed, but rather to provide input on what is being proposed, and above all, to ensure that the art is publicly accessible and appropriate. The Public Art Committee reviewed the developer's proposal, provided comments, and ultimately voted unanimously to recommend that the installation be approved by the city council. We have project representatives here with us this evening, which include, from Skidmore, Owings &amp; Merrill, Steve and Daniel, and representing Phase III, we have Neil and John. They will provide a brief overview of their proposal and happy to answer any questions that you may have. So I will invite them to the podium now.
Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor Davis and councilmembers. I'm Steve Sobel with SOM, and we're the architects.
Can you speak a little bit more into the mic?
Okay, sure.
Or whoever's speaking?
Yeah, we're the architects for Phase III on this project. And just introduce Neil Fox, who's the CEO of Phase III, and John Evans, who is the senior project manager, and Dan Zweig, who is our project architect. So we have a small presentation to talk about the art program.
Excellent.
And I'll lead it off, and we'll tag team.
Okay.
All right, next slide.
Excuse me, could you bring the mic just a little closer?
Sure, next slide.
That's better.
That's good. All right, so this is a current view of the project, and the import here is that this project is really a public space. The idea is that it's very porous, that the public can come up from the Bay Trail, and they can come up from Marina Boulevard and use the spaces in between. And this is really the platform for the public art. Next slide. So we'll talk in more detail, but just to give you an idea, there is a focal point of art at the apex of the courtyard, and it will be a large-scale sculpture, we'll discuss that. And then it shows the additional entries, and along these entries we'll also have smaller-scale pieces of art to allow for a different character and quality. And we want to commend Phase III for the fact that they see this artwork as a vehicle to convey the import of science and the benefit of the research to the community of Brisbane and to the overall society. It's really been an integral part of the way they work. We've done this in a similar way in South San Francisco at the Genesis Towers, and it's a highly successful, highly applauded application of art. So, next slide. Dan?
Yep. So throughout the process, I don't know how familiar you are with the project and with the different artists, but we've worked with two different artists, one of them is Ivan McLean. Here are some photos of his past work, so he does these quite grand, large spheres or orbs. And so we've had him do a collection of orbs for this project as well. And then, next slide, the other artist we're working with is Kurt Brill, who does these human figure sculptures, and these are some images of his past work. So, next slide. There are four art locations on the project. Starting with that bottom-left corner, the kind of monumental piece in the center of the courtyard is by Ivan McLean. It's three spheres, and together make up the form of a CO2 molecule to celebrate the science that is going on at this property here in Brisbane. And then the orbs themselves are made out of these very delicate lattices of metal, corten, and stainless steel. And then these three separate figures placed, as Steve said, throughout the site at these key points, as you can see on the plan at the different entries to the building. So, next slide. This is just a view of that courtyard with a large planter at the sculpture pedestal where we have these three orbs in the CO2 shape. And then, next slide, is another view of these pretty monumental spheres. So the largest sphere is 20 feet in diameter, and the other two are eight feet. Give you a sense of the scale. Next slide. This is the largest of the three sculptures, figure sculptures we're going to have. This is Seated Diana by Kurt Brill. It is going to be visible from the Bay Trail, and also visible from 101, I would say. So it invites you to come up to the podium to celebrate kind of this public space that we created there. And then, next slide, this is Michelle by Kurt Brill on the kind of Titanic moment of the podium, where you can see this from the Bay Trail as well. And that will invite you up those monumental stairs to the podium. And then, next slide. Katia is located at that drop-off plaza, so along Brisbane Avenue. And that will bring you into the project, kind of invite you into this collection of three figure sculptures that kind of make a procession of that public art throughout the project. I think that's all, next slide. John, Neil, do you guys have anything you want to add?
Well, the first thing I want to say is, it's always scary coming into a new town and doing a project this size. And I think we had discussions with your team early on about taking on this project, and you guys have surpassed our expectations. It's, yeah, applaud, because, I mean, a project this size is hard to do, and it's even harder when you don't really work harmoniously with the city you're dealing with. And we've had a great experience, and we would do it again. And so, thank you for, you know, all your efforts in helping accomplish this. In terms of the art, art is a really tough one, you know, because it's so subjective. But what we do is science, and it's all to... Everything we build in our entire 5 million square foot portfolio is a lab space that is supporting science, that is working with companies or helping companies develop drugs to help the human condition. Things that help, you know, sicknesses and disease and things like that. So what we always try to do is bring the human nature into our projects. That's what we did at the Towers with the DNA turning into the man and the woman. Here, what we've done is tried to bring just various human forms into the project, along with something that is having such a big impact on all of us, and that is CO2. Why did we choose that structure? One, it's an elegant structure. I mean, it will look very nice in terms of the three spheres that create the CO2. And it's something just that, it's not really stand out. It's not an in-your-face-type piece, and Ivan McLean's stuff he does is really elegant. And all this art kind of also goes to a theme that Phase III always tries to bring into all our projects, and that's timeliness. We hope you're proud of the buildings that we're building, and we hope they stand the test of time. We think we've been super excited, you know, with what SOM has, you know, designed there. We think in 30 years it's going to look as beautiful as it does today. It's not going to look dated. Well, we want the art to be that way, too. We don't want trendy art, we want something that will stand the test of time, and that's why we've gone down this path. We think all these pieces are going to be something that people will enjoy, you know, today, but also 30 years from now. So, we hope you like it. Art's so subjective, though, you know, it may not hit everybody's button, but we think it does really speak to the nature of what's happening in the buildings. And, you know, what we're all dealing with is, you know, human beings right now on planet Earth. So, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Well, Councilmember Cunningham and I were on the Public Art Committee, so we know some information that I think might benefit the council. So I'll just ask you to go over a few things for everyone's information. The Kurt Brill sculptures, while you see them placed in other locations, it's my understanding that these are all one-of-one. So these are all existing statues in Kurt's portfolio that you're purchasing directly from him, and part of that is due to timing. So to commission brand-new pieces probably wouldn't be ready at the time that the whole building is finished and everything is launched. You want this all tied together and done at the same time, and I just want to confirm that that is the case.
That is correct.
Right, okay, so these aren't copies, you're not going to see Katia somewhere else?
These are real bronze, unique sculptures that Kurt has done. I actually, the way I discovered him, I was out in Palm Desert, and there was an outdoor display of amazing artwork, and a lot of it was his. It was various artwork, but a lot of it was his. And I pulled over, and because we're constantly looking for good art that could go on our projects, and was just really impressed with his work. It's really substantial. It's not something that is fragile, it's substantial art. And so we thought it would, I thought it would be perfect, and it's interesting, too, because it's not so perfect in its forms that it is any one thing, it can be a lot of different things. So we think it will work really well with the project, but you're correct, it is original, and they're bronze pieces.
Great, and then there were some questions from the public about ADA accessibility, and I want to make sure that those who are disabled are still going to be able to access these works.
Sure, if we can go back to probably the second slide?
Come closer.
Could we go back to the second slide? The plan, the plan view, which shows, that won't work. So where it says accessible public entry, that ramp is designed for accessible entry into the project. It's designed to the ADA requirements, and it is there to allow for the same kind of entry to the plaza as the staircases allow for the other, in the other locations. So it is fully accessible both to get to the plaza level and to move around.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open it up.
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
Oh, absolutely.
I have forgotten the relationship with this CO2 piece. There was a conversation in one of the presentations regarding the CO2 molecule and trees, and why you chose the CO2 molecule. Can you speak to that, please?
I mean, obviously, it's somewhat controversial, you know, but it is a building block of life. It's, without it, none of us exist, none of the plants exist. And so we just want it to be a reminder that, yes, we need to, you know, do our best to keep in balance, but we also need it. It's not something that we should be discarding, and, you know...
The relationship was about the trees and the plants?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, it's, you know, trees, this is what feeds trees. Trees don't exist without CO2. Animals don't exist without trees. Really, I mean, people can't exist without animals, because we can eat plants. But there is this whole harmony of, you know, life that CO2 and oxygen and so many other things are a building block of, you know, our human experience. And that was one of the things that I found interesting about, you know, art can be controversial and can also still be beautiful. And that's one of the reasons why it, you know, kind of... I like Ivan's work, period. I mean, even if we just did one 20-foot ball out there, but doing it in the form of CO2 is having so much conversation around it and is having so much impact. I mean, it even impacted our project. We had to raise the elevation of our project because...
And infrastructure to support.
And the structure and things, so it's just, you know, it's just really meant to be a reminder of things. It's not to really put forth any one message. But if I would say there is one message, we need to remember, we can't live without it. We all exhale it every time we breathe.
So, has Ivan ever done other sorts of similar, like, molecular structures?
He's done some amazing work. I mean, he's done, he did this, a dragon about the size of this room that shoots fire. I mean, it's just, he's done incredible stuff, but this is his specialty, and this is what he's known for. It sits in front of a lot of city halls, it sits in a lot of public spaces.
The spheres themselves, individual spheres are his specialty. But the molecular structure is a unique creation that he's doing for us.
Okay, that's great.
He did do a sphere for a lobby of ours, it was a light fixture that he did. And it was one of the reasons why I went back to him, since we had such a positive response to it in this massive lobby. It was about an eight-to-10-foot diameter chandelier he did, hanging from the ceiling. It was a two, three-story tall lobby of one of our projects. And it, one, he's a really interesting, fun person. If you've had an opportunity to talk to him, you'll, you know, know what a sweet guy he is.
Yeah, we talked to him in our meetings.
He was very engaging.
Yeah, he's a very sweet man and interesting man, and really talented, so, you know, we're excited for this piece. And we think, again, we want stuff that will stand the test of time. This is an outdoor piece, you know, it has to be something that will look good in the outdoors, you know, in that planner situation, and be a gathering point at the project, so.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lawrence?
One question?
Councilmember Mackin?
Thank you for your presentation, thank you also for the care you've shown all along from project, concepts, design, all those different steps. In looking at the proposal, when I read our staff report, the first question I had, I was dying to ask you, is why the figures? And you've explained that. But to someone arriving at the site, how will they know why you have these figures? Do you plan to have anything with a narrative of why certain pieces of art are there? Or I just, I wonder, why do we have these random figures?
That's a good question. I can't say that I've had any specific thought about that. Certainly with all the art that we plan to do, some sort of placard that, you know, gives the name of the art and things, if we need to develop a narrative around it, I'm certain that's something we can do. But I can't honestly say that I have thought about it in that way. It's really...
Your narrative, to me, was way more meaningful of how you came to this conclusion of what you put before us. And that was the key, because I'm going, why three figures? Why three figures? What does that have to do with biotech? The sphere I got, but the three figures, I'm going, one's reclining, one's sitting, one's standing. Why three figures? What does that mean?
Well, there's no magic number in three, there's actually another. I was over in Poland and saw another art installation that I would love to bring to this project at a later date that I think is just unbelievably spectacular, and it has two figures in it, but in a really interesting position. And so we're opening, we're open to developing a story that, you know, helps explain why that, you know, that these buildings are dedicated to the human experience. And these figures represent, you know, human experience. At the end of the day, it's like, really what I want people to do is look at the art and have it move them, the same way when you go to the Ephesian Florence and look at the statue of David, there's not really a story, you know, there about David. It's just you look at it, and it inspires you. And it's timeless, it's still inspiring people to this day. And so that's the kind of art that, you know, we'd like to bring to the project. I'm super excited about some of the art we've commissioned for inside of our ground lobby. Some, a really outstanding German painter, and it's going to be so classy and it's going to look great. I think you guys would be really proud of the finished product.
I would just encourage you, that narrative is really a salient point, and it's very meaningful. It ties the whole thing together, and it shows you had a purpose with this. And it just, I would encourage you to somewhere, display the meaning behind these.
We'd be willing to do that.
Councilmember Millar?
Yeah, I like what you've presented. I'm not an artist by any means, but I like to be in places where I'm looking at art and it makes me kind of question, right? And think a little bit deeper. You know, I do like your narrative, but for me personally, I don't want it to be my narrative. I want to go to the site and interpret it in my own way and, you know, and scale it with the buildings, which I think are fabulous, you know. I remember when you came before us, John, with these ideas, and hey, what do you want to do? And it was just like, yeah, you know, that's really, really cool. And what you've created is what you said you were going to do for the most part. So, I appreciate that. And, you know, I'm wanting to do something really cool out at the site. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Connell, any questions?
No questions.
Great. Well, thank you. We may have a question that pops up that we need to call you back up, but you can be seated at this time. I'll now open it up to public comment. And I do have some slips already. First slip, and then I'm just going to have Ingrid reset the timer. Good, okay. First slip we have is Tom Hines. Tom Hines.
Good evening, councilmembers. I think my first question is, why is this called public art? Because the public has to pay for it? Why is it called public art if the public has no input? You should understand by now that I've always advocated for good architecture. Always. That's my only concern. I lost on this building. Now I have to fight for good art as well. In the late 50s, early 60s, while I was in architectural school, we mocked and laughed at Skidmore Owens and Merrill. We laughed and joked. How, anybody can build a box. A box with no heart, no soul. We had a formula, we put on the board. SOM equals SOB. Why should we pay, maybe not financially, but why should we pay for the developer's mistake of not planning early enough for this installation? It's being jammed down our throats, and we have no input on it. These sculptures are an afterthought. They're not integrated into the architecture. They're not integrated into the design of the building. They are not integrated into the community. They don't represent the community. They don't represent Brisbane, Brisbane. They appear to be selected because of friends of these people. So, perhaps some of you are familiar with Antonio Gaudi, a perfect example of integrating art in architecture. The key word here is integration. This is an afterthought. It's an afterthought. Hey, we better do something. Oh gee, we better do it now. Yeah. This past January, 14 artists presented their work to the public. And there were, I'm sure, at least 20 more that could not. While none of these people, perhaps, are not qualified to do a sculpture out there, but they are connected to the art world. Did you consult any of them? Did you ask any of those artists that live in Brisbane what they thought? What their concerns were? No, I don't think you did. If ludicrous only notice people within a 100-foot radius, and then call this public art. Ludicrous people, ludicrous. Why did you not want anyone to know about this, if you only noticed within 100 feet? Why did you not want anyone to know about this? I think I have my reasons, because you know it's junk.
Tom, your time is up, so please wrap up.
I've got two more sentences, please. And it's being forced down our throat without our knowledge. Shame on SOM for not integrating art into their building design. Shame on the developer for not planning early enough for this installation. And shame on you for not consulting any of us. And shame on you if you let this pass as is. Science is innovative. This art is not.
Thank you.
And I'm not inspired. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dana Delworth. You have three minutes. There's sound. There's sound. Looks like we're having trouble with the sound. Are you able to do it without? Or I can proceed with another public comment, and then we can circle back? Okay, why don't you connect with Ingrid? Okay, I did see a hand raised. It looked like on Zoom.
Kim Folien?
Okay, Kim, go ahead, and then we will circle back to Dana.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Kim Folien, and I'm a Brisbane resident who frequently runs out to and along the Bay Trail. First, I do want to say that I'm very excited that we might be getting some public art out there. So, but anyway, my testimony tonight is really regarding the spheres representing carbon dioxide. And I just find it to be an odd choice, considering the time we are in with climate change. While carbon dioxide is a crucial ingredient in photosynthesis, where plants use energy from the sun to turn carbon dioxide and water into sugar and in return emit oxygen for us, we have way too much of it right now. It's the primary pollutant responsible for climate change. It's acidifying our oceans. With our city's focus on being environmentally responsible, such as phasing out gas appliances, I find this piece to be at odds with our city's vision and goals regarding the environment. I really did hesitate to do this testimony, because I truly am excited about the potential. But I'm just having trouble with the carbon dioxide piece. And it just seems like the developer just likes the piece, which is fine, and is just trying to find a way to justify it after, I believe, receiving previous criticism at a past public art subcommittee meeting regarding the contribution of climate change, I'm sorry, of carbon dioxide to climate change. Thank you, that's all I had.
Madam Mayor, just a minute, I'm just gonna...
Let me make sure that Ingrid can get the sound going. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak in the interim? No? Okay. Well, we will...
It looks like, actually, Kim Folien might have raised her hand again.
Okay.
Right now, it looks like the Zoom webinar is...
It's malfunctioning.
It's malfunctioning, not responding at this moment. So, we might need a little bio, bio break, technical break. Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, how many minutes do you think you need, Ingrid? Five?
Five minutes.
Okay. So, due to technical difficulties, we will take a five-minute break, and we will return at 8:56 PM.
...
(pause) (noise) 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 (pause) (noise)
So it was his work that inspired us, not that he's some friend of mine. In regards to the CO2, I'm really confused if it's such a big thing in our world right now and the world's ending because of it. What more importance to have it there to remind people of the importance of it? It can go both ways. A lot of people feel one way about it, other people feel another way about it. But to have it there reminding you to be aware of your carbon footprint and do it in a way that's elegant and beautiful. To me, just casting it aside or any reference to, you know, CO2 is absolutely opposite of what we'd want to do. We'd want to keep it forefront in the center of people's minds. So I appreciate art is really, you know, it's emotional and you've seen that already. But I do feel strongly that what we've presented fits with, in the context of the project and we hope you'll support it. But thank you.
All right.
John, if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted...
Neil?
John?
Neil?
Or Neil, I'm sorry.
Neil, okay, hold on. Councilmember Lenz has a question for you, Neil.
Yeah, yeah, if you wouldn't mind coming back up. Sorry, I wrote down John, so I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
Neil, okay, you know, no, you're right, you know, people are going to have different opinions and, you know, being public servants, right? We're up here and we try and be as neutral as possible and, you know, we might make comments and then we get here comments from the public and we take in all that information. You know, there was a comment made by a member of the public, you know, online, right? And talking about the carbon sculpture and, you know, this is our, you know, not a good message for, you know, like what we want to do. And I was thinking, okay, you know what? When we come back, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you about that. But then you, before I asked, you know, maybe would you consider, you gave a good reason for why you wanted to be there, right? And then, okay, yeah, you can say, no, we're not going to put it up because it's not the right message. And you're saying, you know, we need to put it up because we want people to think about it, right? And then that's, you know, that's, that's like a really beautiful thing. And so I just wanted to just say that out loud while you're here and...
Well, you know, I just feel it is as important as people are saying it is to what's going on in the world. It's not something we should cast aside. It's something we should keep in our, the forefront of our mind. And this is an elegant way to do it and not in your face type way of do it. There's going to be a million people that walk by that might not even recognize the structure. Because a lot of people don't even know what the structure looks like. But to the people that do, it's, you know, it's going to remind them that I need to be aware of my personal footprint. And so I just, I would disagree if it is with the lady respectfully, you know, she feels one way, that's, that's okay. But I think it's to have it in the forefront of people's thoughts is not a bad thing.
Yeah.
For some context, this conversation did happen at the Public Art Committee. And that, this is exactly what the response was. Because we were like, why, you know, why CO2? Why not, you know, something else? And that was the response that was given to us. And I think that that was something that, you know, was accepted by all of us as, you know, being a fair reason why they would want to have CO2 be there. So, you know, we have sea level rise, right? We have the bays right there.
It is right there.
And that's the thing about art, right? Is like you can argue it so many ways. If you love it, you can argue so many different ways why you love it. And if you don't like it, you can argue so many ways why you don't like it. And that's art. It's just what art is. It's always going to happen. So anyhow, I am glad that you said that too, because I was going to bring up that, that conversation occurred and that was said, and I don't know if you were there, maybe it was Mike, at that, at that meeting. But the reason behind CO2 was given and, you know, that, that was acceptable to us. So I guess we can go ahead and hopefully allow you to sit down for the last time if we don't have any more questions. And now we can get into discussion unless there's one last thing you'd like to say.
No, thank you.
Thanks. I'd love to start on this. I think that it's really important to understand how the Public Art Committee works for the public and for everyone here. Because this is the first time that this type of project has come before the council. And so the committee functions in two ways. One, and this is what Noreen referenced earlier, one is that we have the Inluwa Fund, we have money that developers contribute if they don't want to actually commission a piece on their property. And then the city can spend that money on public art in spaces that the city owns. And when that happens, we have an RFP. So we actually would never just go directly to an artist and say, hey, we like your work, do something. We can't do that. We put an RFP out and it's placed in so many different areas because it has to be fair, has to be, it's posted widely. And then artists apply. And we may say, here's a space. Oftentimes, we talk about, here's this space. And you, as the artist, give us what you think you'd want to do in this space. So we've talked about Firth Park. And it's not even saying like, we want a sculpture, but just like what, you might see a mural here, you might see a mosaic here, you might see a sculpture here. So it's, it's broad. And then we see what comes in and we go through the applications. That's one function of the Public Art Committee. The other function, which is why we're here today, is that a developer will decide to take the money that they must spend. So in this case, for Phase Three, it's about a million dollars. And they have the right to spend that money on their own property, in their own, in the place that they see fit, even in their lobby. They can put it in their lobby if they want to, as long as it's accessible to the public. So they can determine what artist it is, they can determine, they, they pretty much have mostly carte blanche to pick what art resonates with them, with their company, with their values, as long as it's not outright offensive to us. So the committee has to look, is it outright offensive? No. We have to look at, are they spending the amount of money they're supposed to be spending? Are they actually spending a million dollars? Is it accessible to the public? So we don't have the same process when we're evaluating art that's commissioned by a developer as we do, like art that we would put in the middle of the park. It's a different process. It doesn't have to be reflective of the Brisbane community. It doesn't, there are all these things like, yes, it might, that might be nice, but this is a private developer with private property and they're going to choose a piece that speaks to them. And as the public art ordinance is written, according to the guidelines that we are following, that is okay. I loved the examples, Dana, that you had in your YouTube video, like, that is so inspiring. I would love to have something like that in Brisbane. I mean, sign me up, I'm the first one. Sign me up, I'm the first one. But we have to follow protocol and inside this protocol, I cannot tell Neil, hey, you know, it's really not my cup of tea, go scrap it and pick something else, when he's met every single qualification. It's like when someone comes to the Planning Commission and they have a house and they've met all of the guidelines in our planning and building codes. And I want to say, well, I just don't like the architecture, so I don't want to approve it, which would be totally unfair if they've met all of the guidelines. And so today, we are asking ourselves, does this art meet the guidelines? It's been reviewed by the Public Art Committee and the Public Art Committee has determined that it does. Now it goes to the council and the council must decide whether you feel that these pieces meet those guidelines. And that's the discussion that we're having. To me, these pieces meet the guidelines. They're actually spending more than a million dollars. I had my own personal feelings about the art and, but at the end of the day, it's not, this is not to be to my taste, right? It's, all art is subjective, not everyone's going to like it. Karen was talking to me the other day, she said, the art that I have in my house is not the art you would have in your house. And the art you have in your house is not the art you would have in your, your neighbor would have, right? Exactly like fashion, like style, so many things, it's design. We all have different preferences. So to me, I think we should move forward. I think Phase Three has been really a great partner in this process. I am excited that finally, we have a piece that's, you know, results of this great ordinance that we've put together. I want to celebrate that. And again, it doesn't have to be integrated in the architecture. Wow, that would be amazing. It doesn't have to be though. The guidelines don't say it must be integrated into the architecture. It doesn't say that. You want to have a statue in the middle of a plaza? You're allowed to do that. So I'll go ahead and turn it over. Councilmember Mackin, do you want to go next?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just think of context. And I, I believe you made a really good point, which is, we talk about what is fitting in Brisbane, what part of Brisbane, what audience in Brisbane. And then we get into individual taste. And no one is ever going to like everything and some people are going to hate it. But I think what's important here is context. And the context of a bioscience campus is very different from a residential area in Brisbane. And there's plenty of room for all kinds of public art to be in public places where the residents are. But this campus is going to be the recipients of that art on that campus. It's still open to the public. But this is something that I understand what Mr. Fox is saying about. He feels that is relevant to the endeavors taking place in those buildings. And who am I to say he's wrong? And I do defer also, I believe it's important to understand that in terms of developer-selected art, we also have to honor the fact that what they like may differ from what individually we may choose. But that there will be other occasions for other public art. And I appreciate the members of the public, Tom and Dana, you showed up today, you illuminated a lot of ideas and dazzled us with different things to consider. And that's no loss. That's something we can look at for the future. And I'm hoping everyone at home that's watching this says, okay, maybe we can do some other things in Brisbane, but it's, it's, maybe it's not going to happen. This is a private property, open to the public. And I don't have a problem honoring what Mr. Fox feels is appropriate for that setting and the people who work there. So that's my take on it. Thank you.
Tom, public comment is closed at this time. We are moving on to a decision. Councilmember Lenz, do you want to go next?
Sure. You know, thanks, Madison, for laying out the guidelines.
Why are we here then? If they can do whatever they want, why are we doing this? Why?
Sorry, Cliff.
So point of order, you brought up different information, you kept this closed. We're leaving because this is a very unfair...
Dana, we've had several public art meetings and you're welcome to attend any of them. I would love for you to attend our meetings, absolutely. As a member of the public, please come. Like, we meet every third Monday of the month, I believe, or fourth Monday of the month. We, you can come to any of our meetings and we've had two meetings already about this.
Point of order, you have brought up new information and you closed the public hearing. We're leaving, you don't want to hear it. Both of you had objections to this, but you've passed it along. I say, take the money and run because this isn't public art, this is misogynistic art. I am very offended. None of you are. I'm offended. Pointed-headed women and women whose bodies are not functional is misogynistic and I am offended by the choices. So I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, Cliff.
You know, so yeah, thank you, Madison, for putting out the guidelines, right? That's very helpful for all of us. You know, I felt that the, the comments by Neo were sincere, right? I think he put a lot of effort and thought into the pieces. And I, you know, when, when you're having a developer put forth the art, you don't know what you're gonna get and there's, there's that concern, but that's how we've set up the guidelines. But in this situation, there was a lot of thought that was put into it and care. And I think we were very fortunate for that. And so, you know, I like the pieces and I would feel very comfortable moving forward.
I think one of the interesting things about the way this guideline is, these guidelines are written is that because everything's not, all the decisions aren't coming directly from the Public Art Committee where we have, like, the developer has the option, right? If everything was coming through the Public Art Committee, you might, you could risk getting similar pieces or pieces that are of a similar taste, depending who's on, who's on the committee. And we, as a committee, may have never chosen these artists if it was up to us. But I think that's what allows you to have a very complex and diverse collection. And that's what we're aiming for, right? We're going to have millions of dollars that's going to come in to the Public Art Fund with the development that's going on in the Baylands and at Sierra Point. And to have so many different players being a part of this process is going to ensure that we're going to have such a variety of art. And if not, for one thing, it's going to create conversation. And that's the magic of art. So to, you, yes, you run the risk of maybe you get a piece that not everyone's into, but not everyone's going to be into everything. But what you do, what you are creating is the possibility of just having a diverse landscape of art in your town. And how lucky are we that that's going to be what, what our art will be in Brisbane? So I'll go ahead and pass it over to Councilmember Cunningham. Do you want to say something next?
Sure. So I will probably get nine lashes for my comments, but I'm going to make them anyway. So art is always an argument. That's just the way it is. What you like and what I like, we already know, is very different. Our senses of style are very different, our homes are very different. And there is always going to be people who cry foul of anything and everything we do. Because if it's not their idea, it's wrong or stupid. I've heard that a million times. And we, we know that. And it doesn't matter whether we're talking about art or we're talking about any other decisions that we make. There is always going to be people who say, if you disagree with me, you are wrong and you are stupid. I've heard it a million times. I don't know how stupid I am, but I've heard it quite a few times. So with the art, we have exactly the same thing. I didn't say whether I like or dislike any of the things that you chose, but I am respecting the developer, that they are putting art on their private property, that they love and very clearly are very passionate and honest about the reasons that they chose those pieces of art. They're not pornographic, they don't hurt anybody. And I'd be the first person to say, I'm ready to make a motion to move forward with it. The entire art committee is made up of so many different people from within our community and they all agreed. But again, there are people in town who, if it's not their idea, it's not good. So we're going to have to live with that. And when we do have art on our public spaces, as you said, that is a completely different conversation. It is handled in a completely different way. And I don't know that we'll ever get one piece of art on a public space in Brisbane. We've been trying now for about five years and it hasn't worked. So thank you for bringing something to us that you, you have your heart in. I can, I can tell that. That's my only comment.
Terry? Well, we've sort of beat the process to, to death. And, you know, looking at this, it should have been very cut and dried because it does meet all the considerations of our public art ordinance. And it is to enhance your building and the public space around your building or within your building. And so, again, it may not be my choice. And really, until I see something, I don't know how it is going to move me artistically. But it doesn't have any of the warning signs that it should be disallowed by this body. So...
Okay. So I heard a motion by Councilmember Cunningham.
And I will second it.
Excellent. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Okay, we will now move back to item N. Information report concerning development impact fees.
So I'll make a few brief comments upfront and then Legal Counsel Michael Rousch will walk you through the report. Just a reminder to all of us that the report before you tonight was a derivative of a conversation that you, as a counsel, had, I believe in June, it might have been May. And the simple question that you asked was, could you have a more generic fee or do you have to have individual fees? Because we've been working on parks development fee and we've been working on a linkage fee. There's also a discussion in the staff report about a traffic impact fee that we might consider down the road. So Legal Counsel Rousch is going to kind of walk you through development impact fees, what you can do, how they have to be constructed and what, how this needs to be structured going forth. And then we can have a discussion about next steps.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Member of the Council, Michael Rousch. Cities and counties throughout California charge what are called development impact fees. These fees are imposed on new development and they're charges that are usually imposed to alleviate impacts that new development will cause to the community. Cities and counties impose these types of fees on a broad range of projects. And they include things for infrastructure, things like parks and, and also affordable housing fees. The types of development impact fees that communities adopt depend on what the needs are that the community decides needs to be addressed due to new development. There is state law and under that state law, development impact fees may include costs attributable to the increased demand for public facilities related to development projects in order to refurbish existing facilities, to maintain those existing facilities, or to achieve an adopted level of service that might be consistent with your general plan. The authority to exact these kinds of fees are stems from the city's police power under the state constitution. As I mentioned, there are several state statutes that also grant authority to cities to adopt these fees, most notably what's called the Mitigation Fee Act, often called AB 1600. There are limits, of course, to what a city can do with respect to imposing development impact fees. Because if the regulation or the fees go too far, then it constitutes a taking for which a city would have to pay the property owner appropriate compensation. In order to establish a development impact fee, there has to be a nexus done. And the nexus usually involves three matters. There has to be a reasonable relationship for the, for the development impact fee. It must show that the development will create a need for the item to be funded by the fee. It must show that there must be a benefit. It must show that the new development will benefit from that particular use of the fee. And certainly, the fee must show to be proportional. It must show that the development impact fee is proportional to the impact created by the particular developer. And to make that determination, different methodologies are used depending on what the, what the impacts are and what the facility in question is. For example, a park improvement fee may be used, may be calculated differently than what an affordable housing fee might be used to, might be calculated on. So you have all these different factors in play, but I think the important thing to keep in mind is that the reasonable relationship test that must be met for, before a development impact fee can be imposed. Under the state law, the Mitigation Fee Act, which I just mentioned a moment ago, it provides the procedural method to go about developing and imposing those fees. And typically, there has to be a public hearing at which time the purpose of the fee is established and the need for it and the benefit that will be caused by it. Because each type of development impact fee has its own, what I would call peculiarities as to its purpose and its use, it is not permissible to adopt a one-size-fits-all development impact fee. Each, each different facility or each different things that are going to be funded must be considered separately. Now, that is not to say that at the end of the day, that the council could not adopt what I would call a citywide impact fee, which would have within that impact fee various components. So for example, you might have parks and recreation fee, you might have a traffic impact fee, you might have an affordable housing fee. And collectively, you could come up with a fee that would not exceed, obviously, the total of what the allowable fees would be, but that'd be, that would be considered a citywide impact fee. But again, it'd be made up of components for which you had done a nexus study to justify those fees. In addition to the nexus studies that need to be done in order to establish the fees, sometimes communities will also do a feasibility study. Now, what that means is, is that a feasibility study looks at what could be charged as, as a development impact fee, but what the market might bear. In other words, if the fees were so high that it's not reasonable that a property owner or a developer would develop in the community, then it might not be practical or reasonable or feasible to impose the full amount of development impact fee. But by having, doing a feasibility study, the council would have the discretion to set the fee less than what the nexus study said you could impose in order to make the, to make development more palatable to the community and to developers. Right now, within the city, the only development impact fee that is out there as a practical matter is for certain residential projects in terms of what they, what a developer has to pay for either dedicating land or providing funding for parks. That's under the Quimby Act, the state law, the Quimby Act. And that's the only existing development impact fee the city has. In the pipeline right now are two additional development impact fees. One would be a broader category of parks, dealing with just with parkland, but also open space and trails and park facilities. And that, that nexus study has been done and it could come before the council if we decide to move ahead with the next step. The other development impact fee that's been either done or practically done is the affordable housing fee. And again, the nexus study has been done for that, but we're again waiting for some direction from council in terms of whether bringing both, either or both of those fees to the council. Also, somewhat on the horizon would be a traffic impact fee. The council is going to look at a traffic demand ordinance fairly soon. And coming out of that would, would identify a number of traffic-related improvements that the council may want to consider. And certainly, new development could pay for some or all, or a portion of those, which a nexus study for the traffic impact fee could, could recover that. So because the, the need, the benefit and proportionality of any particular development impact fee must be considered on some terms, as I mentioned, you can't just have one, one fee that would, that would be able to be imposed without having the individual matters looked at, considered separately. But once that is done, then there could be a fee that would take these various components, try to shake them up and let that be an imposition of fees that would be put on developers. That's kind of a broad overview of what development impact fees are and how they're imposed. And I would be glad to answer any questions the council may have about it.
Okay. Councilmember Mackin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Rousch, I do have a couple of questions and it's...
Mr. Rousch, I do have a couple of questions, and it's pertaining to staff report information. You mentioned nexus as being paramount in terms of justifying the levying of impact fees. You gave a couple of examples, and, and one of them intrigued me because you said, install a new roof at the community center. And, and yet, in another paragraph, you say it cannot be used for maintenance or operating costs. So that's my first question. Could you respond to that, please?
Sure. In my estimation, a new roof, for example, on the community center is a capital improvement as opposed to perhaps coming in and doing some stealing. And say, say you had a minor leak or something like that in the roof, and you had to come in and repair that. That would not, the use of, of the development impact fee would not be appropriate to use for that kind of repair. But if a new roof had to be put on, that constitute a capital improvement for which the development impact fee could be used to pay for that.
Okay, and then in the same kind of realm, in looking at nexus, say that there's a development at Sierra Point, and we have different buildings within central Brisbane which there's no residential occupancy at Sierra Point. And I'm not sure how many people would be working at Sierra Point using the children's playground at the community park or the old library or whatever facilities. So is there a difficulty in making that nexus when the physical location of a development is not really integrated into the residential areas of Brisbane?
What the nexus study, the, the answer is, there is not a, there is no legal problem with doing that. What the nexus study looks at is what is, what are the overall impacts that a particular development will have on the community? And let's say as a result of that, in order to, to meet the, for example, the service level that we would expect, that we want to maintain for our parks throughout the community, it's determined that, that a particular commercial development must pay X amount of dollars in park development impact fees in order to maintain that level of service throughout the community. The fact that the council may take those dollars and decide to spend it in a different part of the, of the town is certainly, is permissible. Because presumably, at some point, there will be funds available to build whatever's necessary for the commercial development out at, at Sierra Point.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember O'Connell, any questions?
Yeah, I do. So development impact fees are separate from any developer agreement that is made to develop a particular project. Is that correct?
Correct. If, if what you're referring to are development agreements, those are separate agreements between the city and a property owner slash developer. And within that development agreement, the city can, it can be an agreement reached with that developer in terms of what that developer must pay for any number of public improvements throughout the community or even community benefits. So you do not have to establish any kind of a nexus study in order to impose fees or to, or to have the fees be part of a development agreement. In fact, development agreements are outside the scope of the Mitigations Fee Act requirements.
Okay, and then if we were to have a park trails type of developer fee, that money could go into the park and recreation budget, but would also be able to be offset with money that had traditionally come from general fund sources to be removed from that budget?
Correct, that if, if you have a, if you have development impact fees coming into a fund to, to provide a source of funding for a capital improvement that otherwise the city's general fund would pay for, then those development impact fees can be used for that purpose, thereby reducing the need for the council to allocate general fund money for such capital improvements.
So typically, a developer impact fee that was going to a particular fund doesn't mean that that particular fund is increased?
Correct. The, you, what you would look at is that, let's say that a particular, particular park facility costs $2 million. And that's what, you know, and based on that, you end up getting, collecting enough fees to pay for that. It doesn't mean that that fund now should be $4 million. The facility costs $2 million. You've now just funded it with development impact fees rather than having to draw on general funds for that purpose.
But again, in the same context, we would not be able to use that fund for implementing programs and maintenance?
That is correct. That's, that would be a, a separate, a separate, that would, that would not be appropriate to use development impact fees for that purpose. You can certainly use them to maintain, to, to go toward existing capital improvements that need, you know, that have deteriorated to the point where you need to substantially repair or replace them, but you cannot use those for program services, per se.
Okay, and, and this might be more of a discussion item, but typically, if you have more facilities, you have more fees that are going out in maintenance and programming and safety that wouldn't be covered by that, so the overall budget may need to be increased regardless to be able to maintain the service level on the facilities.
Correct. If the, if the, if the city builds a new, a new community park, then certainly there are costs associated with staffing, maintaining, et cetera, that particular facility, and that would have to come out of general fund money.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Cunningham?
I have an oddball question. So relative to traffic impact fees, what if the development is outside of Brisbane? Let's say, for example, it's just across Bay Shore at Geneva, so it belongs to Daly City or San Francisco. But that particular development is really adversely affecting our traffic? Is there any crossover or any way we can get those kind of development fees from another jurisdiction if their project is really impacting us in that particular sense of things, the, the traffic impact? For example, we know Bay Shore is very, very busy now, and it's got nothing to do with Brisbane. So I, I said it was an oddball question.
No, it's a, it's not oddball at all. It's a, it's certainly a, a situation that many communities face, that you could, you know, you live in community here, and you have a neighboring jurisdiction that is developing like crazy, and there, that traffic from that neighboring city is, you know, cutting through your community and, and otherwise using, you know, your city streets and, and your, your facilities. In the absence of a regional traffic fee, which many counties and/or multi-jurisdictions have adopted, the answer is no. How the issue gets addressed is that when a, your, when a development within your community comes forward, the analysis takes into consideration not only the traffic that that development is causing, but also impacts from existing development. And that could include existing traffic from outside your community, and that gets rolled into the development impact fee. So in a sense, the developer in your community ends up paying, at least in part, to alleviate some of that traffic impact caused by a neighboring jurisdiction.
We don't have any recourse with the neighboring jurisdiction at all?
No, you, you, the, you know, the answer is no, in the absence, again, of some kind of reciprocal agreement between the two jurisdictions that would allow sort of that cross, cross-funding. But we cannot, we cannot impose on the neighboring jurisdiction to increase their development impact fees to alleviate the traffic that community causes in Brisbane.
Could I just respond to that a little bit? So, and I know, John, you may have some thoughts about this, too. I know, you know, we've had a bi-county transportation planning process with San Francisco and with Daly City, and I think one of the concepts in there is kind of looking at the traffic impacts of projects and the potential, you know, funding sources of those. I don't know kind of where the status of that is right now when we can have that conversation, but I, I know historically, we have had that conversation with our, with our neighbors and with our, you know, fellow San Mateo County city. I don't know, John, if you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, and the previous bi-county study essentially divided up fair share for major regional improvements like the Geneva, Geneva Avenue extension, the Candlestick Interchange, and they would divided it up kind of on a fair share based on the amount of the traffic that these various projects would, would, would create. So there is that kind of framework, obviously requires all the parties to, in, you know, agree to that and cooperate, and that was just with San Francisco and Brisbane and Daly City and that particular effort. The other way we, sometimes you can accomplish this is if a project in an outside jurisdiction, say across the city line, if they have to do their own SEQA document, you know, they would have to do a traffic study and traffic analysis, and if that identified impacts with that project that bleed over into your jurisdiction, you have the ability through that SEQA process to require or request mitigation from other agencies. But for something that is just kind of a by right, it's allowed, and nobody needs to do any more SEQA work. You know, Michael's point is correct. You can't make somebody charge a uniform transportation fee.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Lenz?
Thank you. So, Michael, so, you know, we talked about the, the projects that we, that we can do with these types of funds. You know, you, you mentioned in the staff report, upgrading the kitchen facilities at Mission Blue. You know, as mentioned, the new roof at the community center, replaced playground equipment at the community park, which is very, very, you know, poor condition. You know, we're gonna be cutting the ribbon for the Crocker Park Trail. Installing some of the amenities that, that were found in the, or represented in the master plan. Could, could the funds from an impact fee go towards those amenities on the Crocker Park Trail?
It certainly sounds that way. If the idea is to either build or enhance a, the, the trail, the answer would be yes. That would be covered with that impact fee.
All right, and then, Carolina, I have a question for you. So you know, as mentioned, like, some of the, the budget of the Park and Rec, you know, in, in Park and Rec. Do we, do we have any cap in, that are in the Park and Rec budget? Or that, you know, that we've allocated for Park and Rec, or there, those more like services that are in the budget for Park and Rec?
We can't hear you. Definitely services, and then we have maintenance as part of their budget. But the, the projects are like the CIP that is related to Park and Rec becomes part of the total CIP plan.
Got it. Okay, all right, so capital improvement plan. And then, and, and Michael, you, you were talking about like, you know, trails, so like the stairway that would go from Talari to Santa Clara, that, that could potentially come from these impact fees as well, it sounds like?
Sure.
Okay, and then so, you know, in the, let's see, on page 141, it's the one, two, the third full paragraph down, and it says, as, as to the use of the fees, the facilities must be identified in a capital improvement plan. If you had a master plan, is that acceptable as well?
Sure. It's, it's just some, you know, some adopted document that identifies what your, what your facility needs are. That's the kind of document that should be in play when you do this kind of study so that you know, you know, so you have something to hang your hat on in terms of what you're collecting the fees for.
Okay, no, that, that makes sense. And then on page 142, under the, the section of DIF in the pipeline, so you mentioned the two, the two potential impact fees that, that the council could move forward on. And I'm gonna tie that back to the first page under discussion at the bottom of that, that last paragraph, where you, you, you talk about the types of DIF vary from community to community, but most often, local agencies impose DIF to mitigate the impacts that new development has on traffic, affordable housing parks, and capital facilities. You know, are, are these impact fees, are they, do most cities do them, or does some cities do that, or is it, is it pretty common practice?
It's, it's a very common practice. Most communities have certainly one or more of these development impact fees because the concern is that you have new development, and new development, the rationale being, new development ought to pay its fair share of mitigating the impacts that that development has on the community. And the only, in the absence of a development agreement, the only way to really get those, those funds, you know, are through the imposition of development impact fees.
Got it. Okay, thank, thank you very much.
All right, well, I think that I don't have any questions. That brings us to the end of questions. So I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Please approach. Wait, it doesn't sound on. Hold on. Is she? Yeah, yeah, now you're on.
Oh, now I'm on.
You're just, we can just hear you in general, but the public who needs to hear you through the microphone.
Right, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're really on now.
Okay, I'm really on. All right, I, my name is Lisa Greenlee, and I'm here representing in my own, you know, person, but also as a member of the Park and Rec Committee that has worked for years planning and looking at our facilities in our Park and Rec Department in the city of Brisbane. And I must tell you that the process for improving our facilities has been arduous, if not impossible, because of lack of funds. So many of our facilities have languished to the point of being unsafe. We have, we have soccer fields that have so many holes in them and bad drainage, the kids can't safely use them. We have a community center that is not being used at all to, to its potential because of lack of funds that could make it more usable. I could go on and on, because every year, our committee tours our facilities, looks at the needs, makes lists, makes plans, goes through processes, has meeting after meeting, and are told at the end of the day, we have no funds. This happens. This has been happening since I've, ever since I've been on the committee, which I don't even know. I think it's been like five years. And honestly, I think our kids deserve better. I think our seniors deserve better. I think that anyone who has a business in this town would appreciate a more usable and exciting Park and Rec department that had good facilities that their employees could use. And people, people work here. We have a lot of people that work here that use our trails, that use our pool, that use other things in our town. that use our pool, that use other things in our town that we just don't fund. And this could go a long way to making some of our dreams come true. Um, and also take it out of the general fund, which, like you said, is being taxed by, um, potentially big-ticket items that, that our general fund just can't do. So I would just strongly encourage this body to approve this to really help us do what our community has been waiting a long time to do. And that's all I really have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Anyone else wishing to make a comment at this time?
Madam Mayor, Nancy Luxamana sent, uh, sent a correspondence at 7:23 PM.
Okay.
I don't see a raised hand from Nancy at this time, but she said, "I strongly urge the council to use DIF funds in a timely manner for use in recreation and parks, and also the need for affordable housing projects here in Brisbane."
Thanks, Nancy. Anyone else, uh, wanna speak at this time?
I see no more hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we will close public comment, and now we will move on to council discussion. And I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember O'Connell. Or not, if you wanna go.
Well, it, it doesn't matter if I go first or not, I was just collecting my thoughts here for a second.
Okay.
On how I wanna, you know, discussion. Brisbane spends a lot of money on Park and Rec. A lot of that is on programming. This fund can't be used for programming, it can only be used for other things. And the more we have, to me, sounds like there'll be less to maintain what we already have and what we're planning to build. And we'll just keep going down this rabbit hole of not having enough money to maintain the amenities that we have put out there or put on the table. And it will become more and more difficult to keep up with the expectations of our community on what amenities they would like. Because, you know, when you, you do a survey, we get a hundred different things that people want improved, depending on what phase they're, they are in their life and their children, and, you know, all those other things. And so we are constantly in a battle to try to keep doing more for our community when perhaps, as some of the speakers, speakers said, we're really doing less for them because it's not up to the expectations. And so, for me, I think that developer impact fees, when we, when we're gonna do a big development, like the Baylands, it's gonna have a, um, developer agreement, where they're going to have to pay for certain things, whether that be police, fire, schools, whatever. But we don't have that much future development available land that's gonna be covered by a standalone development fee. There's two or three projects, perhaps, out at Sierra Point. There's one big project that might happen in the quarry. Um, and those might be too far along even at this point, or they are going to have their own development, uh, agreement. And so they're gonna have their own special requests or asks, going forward directly from whatever project they decide to do. So, I'm not sure if we're being pushed into dedicating this for Park and Rec, because that's the study that's been more completed, or if we'd be better off doing impact fees for capital improvement projects. And yet, like, we can't instigate that within moments because we haven't done the, the studies in the nexus. But I think we need to sort of figure out what, under our current size and structure, what we can reasonably maintain for the community under the money that we have and the money we've been spending, um, and see where and how we can serve the people best. So, you know, I'm personally more worried about our long-term liabilities and our pension funds and our sewer system running clear than having less go-for-holes in our fields. And I, I know that makes me sound anti-recreation, and that's not where I'm at. But, um, you know, it's, it's more of my financial worry for this city is having police and fire and safe streets than, you know, having everything look nice and shiny some places. So, I'll leave it at that and hear what the rest of the council has to say.
Councilmember Lentz?
You know, you brought up some good points, Terry, and, you know, I, you know, things like public safety and, um, you know, Park and Rec services, right? And these, these things are all part of the budget. But what we're dealing with is, you know, these capital improvements that, um, that, you know, we could fund with these impact fees instead of general fund, right? To me, they're, they're separate, right? So I think, I think, you know, I'd like to get the focus on, do we think that our facilities are, uh, are responsibility to maintain in a good working order, right? And not just, you know, like the, the maintenance, you know, like, the, the, you know, kind of smaller things that, that, you know, Michael had mentioned, but some of those, those bigger things, right? Like, if we could improve the kitchen at, at, you know, the Mission Blue Center, that's gonna make that facility a much more attractive place, and you can get higher rent, right? So it's like, y- you're taking money, not from our, our own pocket, from our general fund, but you're taking money that is coming from developers that are creating impacts on our community, right? So that's where the money's coming from. It's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming from developers to alleviate these impacts. You know, w- we've, we've talked about like trying to get money for some of these trails, right? To make our town safer, but, you know, sometimes we can get grant money, sometimes we can't.
You mean the stairways?
The stairways, right, yeah.
Would that fall under this?
Potentially.
Right, so, you know, and that's the thing, you know, like, you look at the other cities that have, uh, that have these impact fees. And they've been able to do some really great things in their communities with these, with these funds. How we, you know, disperse these funds, it's gonna, it's gonna be decisions that we're gonna make, right? We're gonna, we're gonna look at, what are these, what are these items in our capital improvement plan, right? The plan that we say is important to us for spending money on? And then how would we spend those fees on those things?
Okay, if, if it's a capital improvement plan project, if it's a capital improvements plan project, I'm happy with it. I just don't want it to be just Park and Rec.
So, e- exactly, right? So you look at, you know, you look at, say, the Crocker Park Trail. Now, someone can say, "Oh, that's Park and Rec," it's like, well, no, I mean, someone's gonna ride their bike there, someone's gonna walk there, there's gonna be public art there. Is that a Park and Rec thing? I think it's a community thing. You know, if you go to the community center, that's, that's a community thing, right? That's a community building, right?
But if it's capital improvement, it could also be a new lift station for sewage.
So, so when you look at the, 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 the impact fee, right? It's for Park and Rec facilities, right? So it's not all facilities, right? But sure, you can roll your eyes and say, "Oh, well, you know, it's, it's, you know, I'm talking about capital improvement here." Well, you know, there's, there's some capital improvement that this money can be applied to, and other items that it can't. So, but does that mean then that we don't do it, right? This is money that if we, if we implement the plan now, and we, you mentioned those, those couple of, uh, projects out at Sierra Point, and potentially went out on the quarry. You know, those, those projects, they're moving forward in the system. We want to be able to establish this before it gets to a point where we can't then ask for that money anymore. That, that, that's like leaving money that, that can go to capital improvements that we all identified o- o- on the table. And, and that would be, I think, a just a, I think that would be a tragedy to do that, personally. So, um...
So, so the other thing, and I, and I understand your, your concerns and your wants for things, and, you know, I want them too. But I am also concerned that when we look at a project, uh, being built, and whether it's beneficial to our town or not, we're gonna be having this divided, um, idea of, do we wanna build this because we're gonna get a million dollars now or two million dollars now? And, or are we building it because it's right for our community? And I don't wanna be forced into building stuff to get money from people so we can have brighter, shiny stuff.
Yeah, you know, I, I think that's a good thing. Yeah, no, I think that's a good, um, uh, you know, a good thing to bring up, but that, for me personally, that doesn't go into my decision-making, right? I, I'm not gonna be like, "Okay, I'm gonna vote for this because I'm gonna get, you know, the, the city's gonna get these impact fees." I, I don't, I don't...
Well, even if we didn't get impact fees, we're gonna get some kind of
We're gonna have a development agreement, right?
We're gonna, we are gonna negotiate other public benefits. So we might not get outright money through impact fees, but we might say, like we did with The Ridge, right? We said, "Okay, we're gonna do this, you're gonna give me Mission Blue." You negotiate public benefits, so, you know, i- if it's not a direct impact fee, you, what could happen is they might say, "Hey, we're already paying all these impact fees, we're not gonna give you a pool, we're not gonna pay for a, um, you know, a Mission Blue, we're not gonna pay for whatever, because we're already giving you all this." That might be how the public benefit, that's where it goes. So we, they, you know, we may have less leverage to say, "We want this one specific item."
So, you know, you know, you're right about that, right?
That's what it could actually...
And, you know, and that's why, like, when you do the study, then you, then you start to bring in the other cities that have done these things, like South City, right, or San Carlos, Burlingame, say, "Okay, this is, this is the fees that they do, and somehow they're able to continue to get development." Now, you know, that, that doesn't seem to be, um, impacted by the fees that they, that they charge. But it'd be great to get all that information, right? To move it forward, to have the work done, and then if we decide, once we have all the information, "Okay, no, we don't wanna do this because, see, based on the information that we gathered, it doesn't make sense for us," then, okay, then, then we don't do it.
Instead of Park and Rec, a related fund? Because it said, "Oh, we can't just have something general, but can we have one that is for city, um, capital improvements to city facilities or public property?" So it maybe like could encompass Mission Blue, but it could also encompass, you know, the storm drains or some, like, yeah, and New City Hall. Could we have something that's just like maintenance of city facilities and property?
So, let, let me attack that first, and I'll turn it over to Michael. Um, just a reminder, y- we do collect water and sewer fees, uh, and, uh, we call them connection fees. They function largely like a development impact fee, although I guess technically they're not considered that. So we do get monies for those types of things. Where we're, we don't get money right now is for our facilities and our, you know, fields. You know, we just have no general, we have no, uh, nothing other than general funds to deal with, with those facilities. I mean, in the end of the day, what's on the capital improvement plan, you guys decide.
Absolutely.
That's, that's your call. And if you don't want to fund certain types of improvements, then you don't put them on the capital improvement list, or you don't have them in a master plan.
So is that a yes, or...
But we still have to maintain them. You know, once we have them, we still have to maintain them.
Well, absolutely. If you, if you build something, of course, you're gonna maintain it. And then, you know, I think you're, I do agree with you that if you build, if you, if you improve a, an existing facility, there's probably gonna be an expectation you're gonna ma- keep that, um, that facility up. If we do a new, um, kitchen at, uh, Mission Blue, there's gonna be ex- expectation that we keep that up to standard. I, I totally agree with that. But, you know, I, I don't know how you get, you know, I don't know how you get around that. But the, the, the issue of whether you build new facilities, let's say a new, um, um, you know, uh, uh, community center, or, you know, you collectively bumped your head and decided to build a new pool, um, you know, those are types of things that, you know, you have a choice on whether or not you wanna put those into your, your capital improvement plan, or, or even negotiate those with a developer in a development agreement. I mean, I think the idea of these funds is just to have another source of funds that gives you flexibility of how you address your, your, your types of facilities. Oh, and the end of the day, it's always a policy decision on how you spend them.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I wonder if, if it's just that it's, it's called Park and Rec, right? And that's, might be the kind of thing that, that might be the sticking point.
Well, it's actually called Parks, Facilities, and Open Space.
Okay, you know, we should call it for what it is, right? Not say Park and Rec.
So it could be regular facilities, can we do it at City Hall? Like, could we fund...
Uh, Michael, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on you. Uh, City Hall sort of maintenance, um, would, would fit into this? Or is that a different fee?
I, I think it'd be a stretch to put City Hall into the, uh, under the, under the umbrella of parks, recreation facilities, open space, and trails. I think we would have to do essentially a nexus study for capital improvements that sort of didn't fall within the other, uh, didn't fall within the definition of traffic, uh, impacts or, you know, the park-related matters, et cetera. Uh, I think you'd have to look at that separately, but it certainly could be used for that purpose, but I don't think we have done the nexus study at this point to cover, for example, a new City Hall.
So, so maybe you wanna, uh, have a session where you review your capital improvement plan and see what kind of facilities you actually wanna try to develop a fee to support?
That I think is a good idea.
So, for me, I just, because this hit the ground running as a Park and Recreation and Trail and Open Space type of program, and, you know, from the beginning, I always wanted it to be more, a different kind of fund, with more options or different options. And because that's the study that went further and got pushed the hardest, we're, I feel that we're sort of being pushed into saying yes to that tagline for this developer, you know, impact fees. And, you know, I mean, do we know how many properties we really expect this to impact?
So, let me answer this, this way. I mean, there's a number of properties or projects this could impact that we may also have development agreements with and other community benefits. So, you know, there's a variety of things that are coming, coming your way.
So if, if we delay too long, though, this may no longer be applicable to those projects?
That was, that was part of the reason. And, and, I mean, the other part, I would say, is that this is a very common fee in most cities, uh, for parks and recreation facilities. So that's why we started going down that road, and we also are having the same conversation at the Affordable Housing, or the Affordable Housing Subcommittee about, you know, what they call linkage fee, but it's still a development impact fee, because that's another very common one. And then the traffic impact fee is another, a very common one. Doing something for just, you know, like, City Hall facilities and things like that, I, I mean, I, I assume, Michael, that you can do that, I, you know, I'm not as familiar with cities doing that. So that, the reason we did what we did is because that's what most cities are doing.
There's precedent. They're not, a developer's not gonna come here and be like, "What the heck is this?"
I mean, you know, it certainly, I mean, it, I, I, I think it might be a good exercise for the council to go through the capital improvement program and start identifying, "Okay, what, what types of things do you really wanna fund?" And then see if we can develop... And then see if we can develop a, a fee around that. And certainly would help, I think, in your strategy with regards to negotiating development agreements. Well, you know, where your priorities are at.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes, we need to do this. However, I, I, even listening to this conversation, it scares me a little for us to agree without making it very clear that this is not a tomorrow panacea for any of the issues we have. Yes, we have issues with all community center. We've got all kinds of issues with the parks that we already have. We have a problem with Mission Blue. And I would hate to think that we say, okay, we're going to do these development impact fees. And then, then what? We don't have any development impact fees that are imminent. How long is it going to be before anything like this actually materializes? So we can't be running around telling people, we just approved development impact fees, which means X, Y and Z. But by the way, it'll be 15 or 20 years before any of, we see any of this money. And that's what I see right now. Um, I'm happy to say, let's go do this and put it on the books. But I think we need to be very, very clear to the public that development impact fees are not coming anytime soon.
Well, is that the case?
Yeah, I mean, they'll trickle in over time. I mean, think, think of your arts fund. I mean, that started off very small.
A lot of money you guys raised.
And over time, you know, you generated a fairly significant amount of money there. It doesn't happen tomorrow.
But it's over a long period of time.
Yeah, it, it, you're absolutely right. It's, it's not.
You have to start sometime.
You don't adopt the ordinance and have money the next day, by any means.
Yeah.
But you will over time.
And, and, and I think, um, obviously the sad part of COVID and, and what we experienced there with 70% decline in our, our TOT, transient, transient tax, tax for people who don't like acronyms. Um, it, it's going to take us a while to get that money back up to where we can address some things that are kind of urgent right now, that, that need to be repaired within the community. And I, I think we need to make those things super clear. And if we have monies available to take care of some of the maintenance, we need to be doing that. So maybe we do need a session on, let's go back and look at capital improvement. What have we got on those lists? We've got some safety issues that are super important, but there may be some, we haven't looked at it for several years, right?
You're scheduled to do it this fall.
Yeah. So, you know, maybe there's some things that are on that list that we, we thought were important a few years ago that maybe can wait. And some other things may have become higher on the list, so.
Well, one thing we're not talking about is that there's another fee that's being suggested in this. And that's affordable housing fee. And this is something that Councilmember Lentz and I discussed at length at our last meeting. We actually have proposals for other types of fees as well related to affordable housing. But the fact of the matter is, we no longer have a way to raise money to build affordable housing. We no longer have, uh, RDA. So we have to figure out how, like, we can create a stream of income for us to start tackling this problem. We have $4 million in our, our affordable housing fund. It's like just not enough, right, to get, it's not much to acquire property, it's not much to get a project going. And if affordable housing is going to be something that we're serious about tackling, then we have to figure out a way to generate money to approach that issue. And I think that if there are developers who are coming in and they're developing, like Freemium is, who's coming in phase three, that's like 800 employees. Most of them are very, 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 very well paid. And so the developers come in, they build these incredible life science and biotech, you know, facilities. Those bring with them lots of high-paying jobs. And those people who now want to have a short commute, they want to live in town, they start to play, displacing people who, you know, were living in studios or one-bedroom apartments. And now somebody comes in that makes 15 grand a month. And they're, they want to find, they also want to rent that one-bedroom apartment. So we need to start funding this. And this is a great way to do it. And I think that developers just, they don't, like, I, I don't think you can really argue, knowing that this is such a huge problem in our, all of our communities. And we have to start holding entities responsible for their part in this problem. Because, you know, we are just given the burden to fix this. And we are not responsible for creating this problem. Except we are responsible for the solution somehow. And so we have to start figuring out how we are going to come up with solutions that aren't from, that aren't our dime.
Yes.
Well, exactly. And, and that group trying to get it on the ballot for next year to tax us for affordable housing, I would rather say, we need to be taxing the people who are bringing
The jobs.
People here and creating the housing shortage to begin with. Not me, not you.
That's an employee tax.
So Cliff and I talked in our meeting about, one, a developer, like, there's, you can charge developers this fee. This is common. This happens. Cliff and I also talked about how do we charge a tax to the actual tenants? The biotech companies, like, think about Genentech. What has that done to the South City, right? What has that done to the rents in South City to have Genentech? If you look, you know, maybe however many years ago, before South San Francisco was the hub of life science, what did the rental market look like? Guarantee it's evolved, and it's evolved for many different reasons, not just that. But that plays a part. And we're next. We're next. And we don't have, like, we're isolated. We don't, we're, we're small, you know? We have to figure out ways to get creative. So, but this is one of them. And figuring out how we can hold companies accountable who bring in lots of high-paying jobs, that's something no city is doing. And that's something that Cliff and I want to figure out how we can create a model. And maybe other cities will catch on. But so far, this is at our disposal. It already exists. And we need to be taking advantage of that, no question. So I don't want the conversation about Park and, a Park and Rec fee to eclipse what's also on our, on the docket, which is affordable housing fee as well. And I'd love to hear from Councilmember Mackin, because she hasn't said anything yet.
I'm taking it all in. I think there's a gray area in listening to the extremes of different opinions, what's being said. Um, just in answer to what you're saying about, um, high-wealth individuals, who I'll call some employees now with the salaries that they're making. There are cities, I know in the Midwest, that charge, um, city income taxes. Literally, you pay an income tax if you work in that city. And the reason being, it's often in cities that straddle a river. Um, that could be St. Louis has, uh, what else? Twin Cities in Minnesota, Cincinnati, cities that, that, where people live in two places. So they're coming into the city, the main one, to work, and they're utilizing those city services, but they don't live there. And so how does that city pay for all those services they're providing all these people working there? That's how they do it. That's a model. I don't know if that's legal in California. So I'm just tossing that out. I'm not suggesting it's a great idea. As far as impact fees, okay, I'm going to make two generalities. I'm in favor of impact fees. I also have a big concern. If it's a good time to really invest in real estate, you might say, I'd like a vacation home. And their houses are really cheap. And you invest in a vacation home. And then you go, wow, I like to go to Hawaii. There's a condo. Those are cheap right now. And you get that. And you acquire these properties and you're very happy. And 10 years down the road, you get a call from the condo association about, everybody has to kick in $50,000 to maintain the property. And then you get a call about your vacation home that, oh, this tree fell on your house, but it's an act of God, your insurance isn't going to cover it, and so on and so on. My point being, suddenly the investments that seemed great, you didn't realize how much maintenance you were going to have to do. What do I mean by this? If we take impact fees as a way to develop new things, Lisa Greenlee, my heart is very warm and grateful to you because we're not taking care of what we have.
Mm-hmm.
We are not able to take care of what we have. Brisbane, if you're listening at home, you don't want to hear this, but it's a fact. We don't have enough revenues. Until we come to grapple with what we're not taking care of, I don't want us to see, I, I don't want to see us take impact fees and go, oh, my God, let's build this. We always wanted this and this. And Cliff, I know people on the Crocker Trail, they want all these amenities. But what about the problem in the buildings and the things that really need, they need work? Because the more we take on, we're going to have more money? Terry, you said it. How do we maintain that? I'm not saying we should never do new things. And because some of these projects will be, as Councilmember Cunningham, you said, some of these may be 10 years out. So if we have impact fees, the potential to levy them, then maybe in 10, 20 years, we say, oh, we want some new things now because we're able, we're getting more sales tax and income. We can do that. But I'm very, very concerned about us biting off more than we can handle already when we're not taking care of what we have. We need to deal with that. So my suggestion is, if we could look into, over and over, what's been said about generalized, more generalized impact fees that were structured as parks and service-related, because the caliber of our City Hall and our Public Works Building serve all of these new developments. And if they're in disrepair, we're not serving the new developments either. So I, if we can look into that. And somehow making something more general. So it could be capital improvement projects. That could be something new. That could be maintaining what we have. And as a council, we then would decide how we allocate those particular funds. But I will also then go to the second topic. Madam Mayor, you brought up.
Can you pause for a second? Because I need to extend the meeting.
Yes, you do.
I'd like to make a motion to extend this meeting to 11 o'clock. If we can't get this wrapped up in the next, this item in the next 15 minutes or so, we're going to need to continue it because we still have three other items. So let's try to wrap this up. But if not, then I'm going to move it to the next meeting. Okay, so there's a second. Roll call vote, please.
Sure.
Councilmember Cunningham?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Davis?
Aye.
And I do apologize, but I'm going to need to ask for a two-minute break.
Okay, two-minute break.
Two minutes.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry, y'all.
I'll adjourn for a two-minute break. All right. We're, I'm bringing this back and we're going to start with Councilmember Mackin. Where I'm saying, are we back? Can we be back? We're back. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the second part of what I was going to say, affordable house, impact fees. I actually think that's a good idea. I'll tell you why. There is jobs housing nexus. We're going to be adding commercial buildings. That's what we're looking for, all these, these, um, non-residential developments for impact fees. If you don't also have affordable housing, impact fees, you're instantly in jobs housing imbalance. And we don't have the money without redevelopment to do affordable housing. So somewhere, we need a fund for that. We are a small city with limited revenues. We need to find smart ways to make that happen. And in deference to Mr. Lentz, I'm all in favor of some new things, but maybe not yet.
Oh, I'm, you know, when you were talking, I was just thinking, yes, I agree with you.
Because you mentioned other cities in South San Francisco to our south, charges impact fees. I've looked into it. They build all kinds of things. But they have enormous sales tax revenue that we do not have. They can maintain. They're building a new City Hall, police station, council chambers, meeting center, all of that. We're, we're struggling to maintain what we have. So right now, it's, it's like, you have a family meeting. This is our family. We need to be on a budget. We need to take care of what we have. And until then, we don't have a lot of money. And I do not want to mislead the public into thinking that this is going to bring in a, a super fund to go on a spending spree because we can't do that now. That's my concern. So I, I, I'm okay with the impact fees. I'd like to see a more generalized fee because I, I don't think we're serving the public if we have a City Hall or buildings that are maybe not safe.
So, Michael, you, we can look at something that's just, can.
Let me discuss it first, and then, Michael, you can correct me if I've got it wrong. I mean, so I think we can look and see whether we can have a fee that would be for all our facilities. And I'm thinking that, jotting down in my own mind, I mean, most of our facilities would fall into, under Park and Rec. But there is City Hall, there's the fire station, there's some public works facilities. Now, the public works facilities in part can be paid for by utility fees, uh, the water and sewer connections in part, depending on, on, you know, exactly what it's being used for. So there is some funding there. Um, so we could either look at enlarging the, the universe of uses for this fee or creating two different fees, just doing another nexus, uh, study. And then you would basically have, you, you probably would lower, the effect would be, you probably lower the park fee and take that delta and have it go to the, uh, to another, the other facility's fees.
But Clay, one of the disadvantages of that, and, and I'm okay i- if you can then come back at me with a different point of view, is that if we need one or the other, we have them separated. Whereas if they are the same, we can decide what the priority is.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you. And it's really, I'm, I'm going to have to, this is a legal question. Yeah, and I, I agree with you, and it's really, I'm going to have to, this is a legal question. You know, I mean, if you, the broader we, the broader you can make it, obviously, the more flexibility you have. That's what you want to do. But, you know, the attorneys are going to have to give us some guidance on just how broad we can get.
Again, I think what you would do is you, you need to have the nexus study to establish the development impact fee for a range of things, whether you put it under the umbrella of capital facilities or park and recreation and parkland and open space and trails or affordable housing. You can have, you know, once you do those studies and establish what the, the allowable fees would be, nothing prevents you from imposing something less than that. And by using those lesser numbers, as it were, coming up with a citywide impact fee that you collect, and then those funds or that fee then gets allocated to those different buckets, as it were. And so, you know, so you accomplish, I think, what you, what you might want. And that is to fund certain things, but everybody gets a little piece of it, but the council decides where those pieces go.
So at this time, can we give you direction then to move forward with the study? And then we can come back and figure out how we slice and dice this thing up.
Right, so the, the other step was that the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan was going to be coming to your October meeting. In, in part, that was going to be a discussion about the linkage fee. I think that probably still good discussion.
Yes.
And kind of outlining what that might look like, because that work has been done. We'll go back and look at the, this park facility, park and greater, more facilities fund or fee, whatever we're going to call this, and see what we can, we can do, what we can come up with.
Do we need to make a motion or just giving you this direction is okay?
If I've got it fairly right, you can just nod at me.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
We're not making any decisions, we're just getting information.
Okay.
Excellent. So now I'm going to recuse myself because item I is related to
You'll be abstaining yourself, Madam Mayor?
I'm abstaining, yes, because item I is related to my employer. So I will pass it on to Mayor Pottem O'Connell.
Thank you. That moves us to item I that was originally on the consent calendar and has been moved to new business. And that is to approve the Brisbane Chamber Event co-sponsorship application for Halloween and anniversary events. Do we have a brief staff report?
I can provide one if you'd like.
I'll just make a motion to approve.
Second.
I, if we've moved it from consent, we would have to have a public, public comment on this item. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on the item? Seeing no hands in the audience, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Nobody in Zoom.
Okay, and then I do have a first from Councilmember Lentz and a second from Colleen Mackin. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And abstaining from the vote is Mayor Davis.
All right, so I need to abstain from item J.
I'll turn it back over to Mayor.
Okay, item J, approve Excelsior Running Club's event co-sponsorship application for a half marathon event. I, does anyone need a staff report on this item?
No.
No.
Okay, council questions?
No.
Does anyone have questions? Okay, no. Open it up to public comment.
There are no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the co-sponsorship application.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz has abstained. Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. Okay. We're playing musical chairs, so to speak, here. And now Councilmember O'Connell is going to abstain for the next item. So item K, approve Sierra Point Yacht Club's event co-sponsorship application for the 2023 regatta. Does anyone need a staff report on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I need to open it up for public comment. Any public comment?
No hands raised, Madam Mayor.
No public comment? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so we can call the vote.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell has abstained. Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to staff reports on upcoming activities.
I'll be briefed. Just to, for those who are watching, we put a drainage swell on Kings near Margaret this past week. The purpose of the swell is to divert stormwater to the south side of Kings where there is a storm drain, so this will hopefully help during the winter rains. Starting next Monday and concluding on Tuesday, the San Mateo County Parks will be performing vegetation management work on the Ridge Trail on San Bruno Mountain. And then finally, San Bruno Mountain Watch's annual pancake fundraiser is this Sunday, September 10th, at the Mission Blue Nursery, starting at 9:00 a.m. And you can get your tickets at mountainwatch.org.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to mayor council matters, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. I'll go first. Councilmember Lentz and I had two affordable housing meetings. One was, we met with Eco Northwest, which is conducting our Affordable Housing Master Plan. Really valuable, we talked about how we can raise money to actually produce affordable housing and how we can also, like, inspire companies to build workforce housing. So those are things that we're going to discuss with you, I believe, at our next meeting more in depth. The other meeting that we had was different, focused on the bridges, the one visitation, or the senior, it's not one, is it one visitation?
No.
Okay, it's a senior housing site. So Bridge is the operator, their lease is coming up. In the next, like, five years, it's going to expire, 2027, it's going to expire. So they have not been charging, according to them, they have not been charging the rents that they could be charging, the tenants that live there. So although 50% of their units have turned over since 2019 to new occupants. And for some reason, they are not charging likely those new occupants what the, the rent level that they could be charging. And so now, according to them, they have $945,000 deficit that they'll incur over the next four years until the end of their lease term. But real loss is more like $250,000 because they have maintenance that they have to do and they have staff that they have to have for that site. And so when they look at like the rents and the income coming in, it really is more like a $250,000 loss. But they're saying it's a $945,000 amount that they want to be compensated because that's the total revenue they could be making. But because, but they have chosen not to charge certain rents. And so the only way they could is if they just like bumped everyone up astronomically. So they're asking the council, and this is not an item for a discussion, this is just informational, they're asking the council until the end of their lease term to give them $945,000 to cover that from our Affordable Housing Fund. Also, what they're asking for is they have a $2.34 million loan through the city and a $1.5 million loan with interest from the county that they owe us for the construction of that site. I understand they have not been making payments on some of that loan in recent years. But when the end of the lease term comes, that loan is going to be due. They want forgiveness for both of those loans. Obviously, we, we could never forgive the 1.5 million because that's not within our purview. They're also asking that, at the end of their current term, that we renew another, we, we extend for 99 years. So anyway, that was a really robust conversation that Cliff and I had with staff. And we are asking for lots of information about where these, how these numbers are coming about. But this is something that the council needs to negotiate, whether you, how you want to proceed on this item in the future. So that will be coming forward.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Did they provide you with any substantiation for the deficit they have in their operating expenses compared to the rents they're charging?
No, we're good, I, we're asking for more information about why, if 50% of the rents have turned over since 2019, why are those new tenants who are coming in? So they show like all of the rents they're charging and what they could be charging. And they're all much lower than what they could be charging. And I'm just, so they said like if they had all new tenants right now, they could be charging X. But they've had seven new tenants out of 14 in the last, since 2019. It doesn't seem like any of the new tenants are paying what sort of market rate that they could be charging. So we're asking for more information about how the rents are determined and why, if that's the rationale, that if it was brand new tenants, they could be charging much more when they've had seven fairly new tenants. The logic doesn't, the math is not mathing. So we're asking for more follow-up information.
I'd be asking for the criteria on could be charging, what, what determines?
What's like AMI, you know, 80% of AMI, that sort of thing.
So they don't raise rents per year?
They do, but
Okay, you'll be bringing back more information.
We're going to be, we, Cliff and I are trying to fill some holes in this, in the information. And once we have that, then we, because we know that the council will ask all of those questions. So we're getting all that information so that then we can bring it back to you so you can figure out what's best, how best to proceed. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, just that, you know, we, we've also been addressing some of the concerns that were raised by the public.
Right.
So we've been getting that information and yeah, it's definitely something that we're going to have to bring to the full council once we gather up all of that information and how we move forward with, with the site. Because there are definitely some options for us to consider.
Sounds like it might be a closed session item.
Perhaps, real estate negotiations, you never know.
Yeah.
But all this happened in a public meeting, and this is in the public staff report. So we're just making you aware how you wish to proceed. That and renegotiating the terms of real estate, that might fall under the closed session. So that might be when you see it. When we come to you, we want to give you, hey, if we want to proceed with this option or here are some other couple of options that you might want to consider. And this is the recommendation, and here's all of the full information so that everyone can have what they need to make the best decision possible. Karen and I had two public art committee meetings as well. And we basically talked about the Phase Three project, You Heard It All. And we also talked about where the Plugs Preserve is going to go because we've been notified by the owner of the former Plug Preserve that they'd like to reclaim that land so they can put an ADU there. It's not, it doesn't belong to Julie's, it actually belongs to the property on Mariposa? No, no, no. Yeah, Mariposa. So we talked about actually spreading the plugs around. So we have a site behind, already, an overflow site behind the bathrooms at the community park. There's like seven of them already there. Then we're talking about doing kind of the more substantial Plug Preserve sort of close to where the Christmas tree area is, where we would put the rock. We'd have a collection there, so you see it as you're coming into town. We also talked about putting a collection at the entrance to Quarry Road and San Francisco, kind of by the community garden. And then we also talked about putting a collection at Firth Park. We talked about possibly doing, establishing a walking tour where we could have QR codes at all of the hydrants, maybe spray painted on the ground or something. So you could go, you could scan, you could see who painted it, what's the, what's the inspiration, what's the story behind this hydrant? So you, and it could tell you like what other, maybe what other hydrants are nearby. So if you wanted to do a walking tour and see all the hydrants in town. And, you know, like, some of the hydrants, it's like one hydrant's Martha Washington, but you might never know that. So it allows you to have more information about each hydrant and encourages walking and recreation fairly, like, low cost to do. So we talked about that and
Have you thought of putting them along Crocker Trail as well? Because those might be interesting little footnotes as you went along the trail.
We didn't talk about that, but that's a great idea. I mean, I think there's like a lot of our other art that we're talking about for that site, like benches, murals, that sort of thing. So we wouldn't want to necessarily compete with a space that's already going to have to have this art as it is. A good comment. And then I have the last thing. Councilmember Cunningham and I had a two-by-two subcommittee, and we talked about the after-school programs at REC, at Littman, what, how the city funds those. We also talked about other programs like soccer, football, that sort of thing. And why maybe we've had like lackluster interest in some sports teams. It's really because there's so much really that we're offering after school for kids. Like when I was growing up, we didn't have after school anything at Littman, so it was just sports. If you wanted to do something, you did sports. So now there's just so much that we're offering, there's not enough kids to make teams. And there also is like half the kids now than there used to be in my grade. So there's so many less kids. And so you're just, you need a certain amount of kids to be able to do a team. And so there was questions about that, so we explained that. And then we also explained how we communicate, when it's time to enroll, the activity guide, where it can be found, how the school might be able to do a better job at communicating these opportunities to students. And we also talked about how we physically send a park and rec person to Littman to recruit kids to join programs. So those are all my things. And I see that Cunningham and Lentz had a meeting. And I'm sure you've had a couple of county meetings too.
Karen, you want to? Okay. Yeah, so economic development subcommittee meeting. And you're discussing, you know, potential options with the property that we have purchased, the old B of A site and, you know, how we might, you know, partner with the village, expanding, you know, potential opportunities with Parkside to other parts of the industrial park. And, you know, Mitch was going to get some information, try and set up some meetings with the subcommittee in the Brisbane Village, Prologis, since they own many of the warehouses that are within Parkside. So, yeah. You got anything else to add to that, Karen?
No, just, you know, trying, trying to get people to return phone calls, and we won't name names, has been very difficult. So that whole process is very slow. That's kind of the holdup there. But we're working on it.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Mackin?
Did you do affordable housing?
Yes, we did that, we did for both of them.
Okay. I had many Peninsula Clean Energy meetings, but I won't go into all of them. Suffice to say, I'm going to remind everyone that 30% of greenhouse gases in San Mateo County are from methane gas combustion in buildings. So that's gas water heaters and that's also HVAC units. PCE has, for several years now, had programs providing technical assistance and incentives, notifying them of rebates, helping people who want to replace gas appliances with electric models, which oftentimes are much more efficient, by the way. The departure from doing the residential side of this is that now PCE has approved and will be offering a program to assist local governments with existing building decarbonization. So that's very, very, very big. And this kind of came about, Brisbane was kind of on the cutting edge with this because we have some issues with the pool and the potential heat pump water heaters. So as a start for the first year, $10 million has been approved. Loans will be available up to $600,000 per project, per city. The loans will be at a very low interest rate and a very generous seven-year repayment term. And it's anticipated these will be in demand. So the additional years that this program continues, PCE will consider increasing the amount available to local governments. Someone had asked at our meeting if we would extend that Someone had asked at our meeting if we would extend that to school districts. And the need right now is truly in the different cities. So schools may be considered in the future school districts, but right now it's just the municipal governments in the PCE area. The last part, I've been working as a member of the marketing subcommittee of PCE, and we're examining other ways to offer assistance to customers. There's a lot to understand about new electric appliances. We want to help people understand cost savings and identify more with the rebates and incentives. And also outreach to contractors because that's often where things begin. And some contractors aren't familiar and they'll tell you, just keep all the gas appliances, which you can for several more years. But you could also be investing in new electric appliances, some of which are a lot more efficient. That's my report. Thank you.
Excellent. Terry told me she didn't have anything, so we will move on to written communications.
Written correspondence was received from Barbara Ebel, Public Art, Dana Dilworth, Comments on Public Art Proposal. Dana Dilworth, Additional Information for Art Installation, 97 Agenda. Christina Florkowski, Complete Street Safety Committee and the Safety of Brisbane. Dr. Michael Abney, City Signs. Dana Dilworth, Additional Comments for 824. PC Meeting. Sarah Kenahan, Childcare Needs in Brisbane. Dan Dudley, New Business. And Steve Karikas, Regarding Code Enforcement.
Great. Anyone wishing to make public comments at this time?
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we will adjourn the meeting, 11:02.